Hi Shawna.
Hi Kara, how are you?
How are you?
Good. I'm assuming it's not just us two tonight.
I think we'll have a couple more people. Hi Erin.
Hi Erin. How's everyone's summer going?
Good. Can't believe it's mid-August.
I know. Hi Ron.
So we're expecting Elliot to join us too. It's only 6:59 at my computer. Giselle could not join us though. Elliot's coming, okay. Yeah. Looks like we have a rather full house in the participant attendees.
Carol, I copied you. I got a bike.
Good for you.
Oh, sorry. A trike.
That's even better. That's my next step.
You can bet it's better. I haven't fallen off yet.
I'm right behind you. That's great.
Carol, we do not have Raquel with us this evening. She's on vacation for taking minutes, so I'm going to be taking minutes. So I just want to take care if we do any motions that I capture everyone and take adequate notes, so.
Okay, feel free to interrupt and ask us again.
We're all on the same page.
Hi Elliot.
Hello.
So Elliot, I don't know if you heard, Erin is taking minutes for us tonight, so we may need to repeat ourselves a couple times if necessary. Yeah, better you Erin than one of us, I think. We appreciate that. So welcome everyone. It's 7:01. I think everyone is here who were expecting. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of August 18th, 2022 to order. We have two public hearings scheduled for this evening, so I want to take a few minutes to review the process for public hearings. During the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to join us as a panelist to present the application, explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested. The applicant or staff will share all application materials on the screen as needed. Comments of town agencies will be read for each application if there are any. There will be clarifying questions from the commissioners. Then there will be an opportunity for clarifying questions from attendees. Any attendees, please raise your hand through the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. Next, those who wish to support the application may come forward, and then those who oppose the application may come forward. As this public hearing must be recorded, it is necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. The applicant will then have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the regular meeting, during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision of this commission and has a right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Land Use Department at 203-245-5631 after 9:00 a.m. All actions taken tonight by the commission will be by roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. Seated this evening are members Ron Bodenson, Shawna Hay, Elliot Hitchcock, and myself, Carol Snow. Staff present this evening is Erin Mannix, Town Planner. The meeting is livestreamed on YouTube and will be made available on the town website for viewing. Additionally, I would ask that we not use other devices unless needed for the meeting and treat each other respectfully throughout the meeting. The Town Planner will now read the legal notice. Erin?
Notice is hereby given that the commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 18th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. via Zoom online webinar. Attendees may join the webinar through either the webinar link or call-in information below. Webinar ID is 915-8196-6735. Password 452138. Call-in number, excuse me, 646-558-8656. The following applications will be heard. 22-17 DVD, 14 Railroad Avenue, MAP 49, Lot 64, D District, Owner/Applicant, 14 Railroad Avenue, LLC. Special Exception Permit Modification for Section 6.2.2.2 to construct 13-unit multifamily development and associated site improvement. 22-18 Plus Coastal Site Plan Review, 35 Cottage Road, MAP 31, Lot 5, Zone R2, Owner/Applicant, 35 Cottage Road, LLC. Site Plan Application for a Proposed Affordable Housing Development under Connecticut General Statutes 8-30G to construct 18 residential dwelling units and associated site improvements. Application also includes a coastal site plan review. Further details on how to participate in the webinar are posted on the Town of Madison website, Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the Land Use Office. All written correspondence can be submitted to the Land Use Department via email, landuse@madisonct.org. Dial 203-245-5631 for assistance. Dated at Madison, Connecticut, this 25th day of July, 2022. Carol Snow Chair. This was published once in the source on August 4th and once on August 11th.
Thank you Erin. So the first item on our agenda is Public Hearing 22-17 DVD, 14 Railroad Avenue. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move to open the public hearing.
I want to thank you in a second. Ron? There's no further discussion, so we'll get right down to business. Erin, can you invite the applicant?
Yes.
Applicants? Welcome everyone.
Everyone.
So Erin, we need to get Mike Ott on this.
I've got him. He's coming. Thank you. Done. I think everybody's here. We have John Matthews, John Cunningham, Michael Ott, and Michael Iacurci. Is that your group?
Yes.
Okay. You're all set.
So Michael Iacurci, are you gonna do the opening?
Yes, I can. So I just wanted to introduce our group. This is for 14 Railroad Avenue. We have an application just to amend of the previous application that was approved due to a specific issue regarding the water coming into the property. We changed the number of units from, I believe it was 14 to 13. John, I may be wrong on that. I'm sorry. But John Matthews, John Cunningham, and Michael Ott will be explaining the maps that we currently have presented to the commission, and I will let them speak regarding the application.
Mike Ott, can you put up that colored site plan of mine, please? This, this is the revised site plan. The two buildings at the lower end of the site remain identical to the approved plans that are in place. The front building is, the front portion of the front building is identical to the approved building in the previous application. Prior, we had two ADA units in between the front building and this rear building on the left. We had issues with a water company. We had to eliminate one of those units. So we took one of the ADA units and we pushed it up and connected it to the front building. And then the open landscape area was redesigned, which John Cunningham can talk about. But that's the nature of this application. The traffic, the driveways, the materials, everything stays the same. That's in the approved application, with the exception of eliminating one unit and going from 14 to 13. So are there any questions about the basic site plan from the commission?
Anyone? Not for me.
Okay, so, Mike, could you put up the floor plan elevation sheet? I don't have video capacity for some reason. But there is actually one that's in color, Mike. If you could find that, it would be easier to look at.
I do have that as well. Oh, you got it. Okay.
Here we go. So the top two images, the one on the right is the rear of the building that you would see from the parking area in the center of the site. The one on the left is the street elevation. The only change to this is we had to reverse the layout of the building. The door you see on the right used to be on the left, and that door goes up to the second floor, two-bedroom unit, which has a small attic loft area. The first floor now is an ADA unit. We're required to have two, so we have a sloped sidewalk ramp that comes up to a porch. So the ADA unit has total accessibility. And then the door on the right goes up to the second floor, which is again a two-bedroom unit as it was before, and it stays exactly as it was before. And then on the rear, on the right, you can go see in the other elevation, this is the one-story element, and then this is a two-story element that goes gated. And the cabinet you see are for utilities. So Mike, let's go down to other elevations there. Okay, this elevation you're looking at, that's the driveway elevation. The larger shape that you see is the sort of original rebuilt house. Then the step piece that you see to the left with a sort of cranberry door, that's an ADA unit. There used to be two of those in the center. We moved one of them up and eliminated the other one. There is a partial basement under the front portion of that. At the other elevation, there's a door on the right side of the building that takes a common stair down to the basement for utilities and storage. The sliders that you see actually come out of the living room of the ADA unit. So we go over to the floor plan, Mike, and I could show you. Yeah, let's start. Yeah. The bottom one is the basement. We don't really need to look at that. So this is the first floor plan. This is the sidewalk coming down from Railroad Avenue. This is the ramp sidewalk up to the porch, the door into the ADA unit, the stair into the second floor unit. Come down the sidewalk, there's a direct ADA access to a living room, kitchen, dining area, and a bedroom on the first floor, which is all ADA compliant. So we have our two ADA units. And if you slide it down, Mike, we could go to the second floor. So this is the upper level of the relocated ADA unit. It has a bedroom, it has a little loft area when you come up the stairs, and a bathroom. And then the original relocated rebuilt structure has a living, come up the stairs, living room, dining room, kitchen, bathroom, two bedrooms. And there's a stair that goes up to sort of a loft area if you slide the drawing down, Mike. And so that's the loft area that's under the sloped roof. It does have a shed dormer on the right side of the building, which has headroom for the stairs. That was true in the other design, except the stair was on the bottom rather than at the top. So that's the same materials, the same colors. Everything went through ACA. ACA really liked this a lot because they felt it opened the whole plan up in terms of space between the buildings. And we had a really good report from ACA, I believe. So are there any questions about the buildings? Or the building? Because this is really the only change. So, Mike, do you want to take a quick, really quick description of what the change was for the site utilities that required us to make this change? So people will understand that. And then John Cunningham can talk about this landscaping, unless you would rather have John Cunningham first.
I can do that really quick. If the commission could bear with me just a sec. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing and open up the right drawings and then reshare again. So can the commission see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
So for the record, I'm Mike Ott. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summer Hill Civil Engineers with an office on Wall Street. And hopefully you can hear me okay. There's a band playing at Moxie right now. Hopefully, hopefully you don't hear that. So I think what John was was saying was, we had worked with the water company. The utility lines are shown in color here. And the blue line is the water main, actually, that will come into the site. The orange line is the telephone and communications and including, and power, I'm sorry, telephone, communications, and power that will come into the site. So in order to meet the water company's requirements, as John said earlier, we had to eliminate building that was in this, generally in this location. So the utilities come from Railroad Avenue underground. Unfortunately, power has to come from the other side of the street. So there'll be a cut of Railroad Avenue and the power will come across. Water is on our side of the street, so the disruption to the pavement for water would be limited. So all the utilities will come in underground down the driveway, and each of the buildings will be served off of the water main, which comes into the site and takes a left as you look at the plant, and dead ends at a blow-off valve here at the end. And the other three utilities, power and telephone and communication. We haven't shown exactly how they will enter, or how they will be routed to the buildings. That's really up to the utility companies. But they will come into the buildings here. There's a little exterior utility room at the end of Building D. There's one here at the end of Building B. And I think we showed, yep, here's the one for this building, this new building. So that's how the utilities work. The only other thing we changed really is we moved the subsurface stormwater infiltration system. We moved that. It was approximately in this location, and we shifted it up and to the left a bit. We did additional soil testing to make sure that we have the right soil and groundwater conditions in this new location. We just did that last week. And again, the only other change is we redesigned septic system that will serve this building, and that's shown here. Those are really the only changes to the to the site utilities, including stormwater. So unless the commission has any questions, I can show John Cunningham's landscape plan? If that's okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, let me see if I can find that.
There we go. Good evening. John Cunningham on our TEC Landscape Design located at 62 Wall Street in Madison. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I have an echo in my office for some reason. There's not really much change to the site. Front building that John talked about. The two rear buildings stay the exact same. The rear terraces all stayed the same. The one little change is we've moved our, let's say, community area. If you see where I have it located on the site, it is directly over the infiltration system or the detention system that Mike explained. So there couldn't be any plant material there anyway, because all the concrete and the infiltrators are in the ground. So I thought this might be a good area to have the community center. It'll probably be poured concrete. It'll probably be scored in a three or four-foot square segment. So it will look a little different from the sidewalk that leads up to it. The only little change I made in the landscape plan, we are still using red cedar as a screening tree. The three trees down the bottom of the site that are next to clarity, because of the overhead wires, I moved from red maple to hedge maple, which is what we used at the front of Bradley and Wall and also on Bradley Road at the Vista Buildings down there. So I think it's a nice way to tie the same trees back into that area of town. Everything else really remains the same. Lighting plan is really the same. The light locations might have changed a little bit. And the rest of the plant material in the front of the buildings is all the same.
John, may I ask you, are they the same-sized trees? Just a different variety?
Just different variety. Erin, I listed four-inch caliper on the hedge maple, three and a half to, I'm sorry, two and a half to three-inch caliper. Thank you, Michael. On the shad blow, same size. The honey locust I listed at four-inch caliper, and the red cedar I listed at six to eight. Those are all from the last plant.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
John, I have one quick question. Carol?
Let me just, first of all, identify myself. I'm Matthews, architect, 817 Boston Post Road, Madison, and a Madison town resident. Okay.
Thank you, John. Quick question about the landscaping down by, I think it's Building D, which is the southwest. Would it be possible to put another tree? See where you've got, I mean, first of all, I think this landscaping plan looks great, and I like it better than the previous plan. But I was wondering where you have one next to the community area. If there's another one like that on the corner of the building, just to break up the view that the units that look out across to that end of the building.
Yeah, you totally could. The tree that you're talking about is a single-stem shad, or shad blow or service bearing. We could easily move an additional tree down the corner if you'd like. Not a big deal.
That'd be great, I think, just to break up that end a bit.
No problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We also have a fire hydrant in that same area, but I'm sure that can be coordinated with a tree. By eliminating the one unit, we now have 2.4 or 5 spaces per unit parking. We have 10 garages and 22 surface spaces, which should be very sufficient. The other thing for some of the newer members, we have an emergency drive that hooks into Bradley and Wall's restaurant near Crash Gate on both sides, so no one can park in that.
And that's, the previous plan showed that too.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I just thought I'd point that out for.
I agree with ACA. I think this looks like a great plan. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? Should we open it up to, um, if there are any participants who would like to speak? Aaron?
I would just ask Mike to unshare his screen so I can see what we have here. Um, I did just want to add on the record, we mentioned ACHA. The minutes have been uploaded um to the application documents, and it does indicate that um the committee of recommended the modification as it was presented and, and did not suggest any modifications to that.
Thank you.
That's right. I, I don't see anyone with their hand raised. Um, so if anyone is interested in speaking, aside from any of the written correspondence, uh, we did have some correspondence that was received, and that is online as well. I, I do have one. Uh, Corey.
Hi, yes, um.
Record, please?
Yes. Uh, name and address, is that what you need?
Yes.
Okay, Barbara Moore at twenty Edinburgh Lane. Just out of curiosity, um, the gentleman mentioned that the only two things that were changed were um, the number of units uh from fourteen to thirteen, because the water company said that they can't support fourteen. And then the other question was, um, so the question really is, what did you, what did you change about the septic system? So we know why you changed from fourteen to thirteen, but what did you change about the septic system? Just out of curiosity. Thank you.
Um, so for the record, again, I'm Mike Ott. Um, so we didn't, we did not revise the water, um, because the water company could not support fourteen units. It, it was a, um, in order to meet their requirements for where the water main goes, how each building is serviced, serviced. Um, that's why we had to make the change. The, the water distribution system on rail is more than adequate to support um this development and, and more. Um, the only, the only change we made regarding septic is the septic system for the first building that the architect modified. So because he modified it, um, I believe it was originally a four-bedroom building and it became a six-bedroom building. So we redesigned the septic system for a six-bedroom building.
But we also, Mike, eliminated a four-bedroom system that had gone with the building that was there before. So there's actually one fewer septic systems on the site than previously approved.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
There are no additional hands raised.
Okay, thank you. In that case, um, could I have a motion to close the public hearing for twenty-two dash seventeen DVD fourteen Railroad Avenue? Is that Elliot? Was that a hand up?
Uh, no, I was actually gonna say, that was a portion for questions, so you still need to do the or against.
Oh, thank you for the reminder. Um.
Um, excuse me, Carol, if, if
Yes.
You have a hand raised again, um, from Barbara Moore.
Okay, Barbara, you're back on.
I'm a little slow with this. Yeah, um, I'm sorry. Could you please explain again why you switched from fourteen to thirteen and the involvement of the water company? I kind of missed that a little bit.
Um, so the water company has regulations about where a water main can go on a site. And where the service lines that come off the water main um, um, can be located and, and how they, uh, how they are arranged as they come off the water main. So with the um, the previous layout with, with more buildings, we could not meet their requirements. So, so the building, one building was eliminated and that allowed us to meet, meet their requirements with regard to where the water main goes and how the services come off the water main and how they enter each building. Uh, if, if that helps.
Barbara, does that help you understand?
It does. Thank you very much, Mr. I really appreciate the explanation.
Okay, so as Elliot reminded me, um, I then asked for any, um, anyone who'd like to speak in support of this change to the project? And if anyone like to, would like to oppose it, this is the time to do that. Any hands up?
Hands raised, uh, Madam Chair, for either uh comments in favor or opposition.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. So I think in that case, we can move to um, for a motion to close the public hearing for twenty-two dash seventeen DVD fourteen Railroad Avenue. Could I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Elliot. In a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'm.
Everyone, Aaron? When opposed? No one opposed, so we can close the public hearing and move to deliberation? Are there any other questions, comments? Anything else the commissioners would like to express?
And I think it's uh pretty straightforward. I mean, it's a decrease in uh the number of units and all the, you know, outside of the change of design going to one less unit. Uh, everything else seems pretty straightforward, so I don't, I'm not opposed to the change.
I think it also provides a little more open space, which is good.
Yep, no concerns about the changes.
Good. And Ron?
Yeah, I'm, I'm convinced.
Okay, good. I think we all are. Um, in that case, could I have a motion to approve? Um, we have a resolution written for us, and I was, I'm hoping we can get a motion to prove it as for that language.
You need to share that?
Yeah, that'd be great, Aaron. And if someone could read it as part of the motion.
Um, I'll be happy to read it.
Thank you, Shona. Thank you.
Sure. The following
Dr. Hay, you're muted.
Thank you. Um, the following resolution is offered. The planning, Madison Planning and Zoning Commission approves application number twenty-two dash seventeen DVD um fourteen Railroad Avenue, map forty-nine, lot sixty-four, D District, owner applicant fourteen Railroad LLC special exemption. Uh, permit modification per section six point two point two point two to construct thirteen-unit multifamily development and associated site improvements as shown on a set of drawings. Road Village fourteen Railroad Avenue, Madison, Connecticut, prepared fourteen Railroad Avenue LLC by Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors PC Sheets. Uh, C zero point one through C's the three point five. Um, dated December twenty twenty-one revised to August fifteen twenty twenty-two. And architectural plans for Railroad Village prepared by John A. Matthews Architecture and Planning. Uh, Sheets A dash A one through D dash A two, five sheets total dated seven fourteen twenty-two. Photometric plan, site lighting photometric calculation for Railroad Village zoning by Apex Lighting Solutions Sheet SL dash one C dated seven nineteen twenty-two. Landscape plan for Railroad Village by TEC Landscape Design Incorporated dated seven nineteen twenty-two with the following conditions. One, that the zoning enforcement officer be notified at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of any regulated activity. Two, six feet tall temporary fencing shall be installed along the perimeter of the property prior to any construction activities. Three, that all erosion and sedimentation controls be installed prior to any site disturbance and be maintained for the duration of construction activities. And until the site is sufficiently stabilized to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Four, the subsurface stormwater system shall be inspected by the design engineer during construction to verify consistency with the approved plans. Five, an as-built survey of the stormwater system components shall be submitted to the commission with written verification from a licensed engineer that the system was constructed in accordance with the approved design plans. This submittal will be completed prior to the issuance of a final certificate of zoning compliance. Six, a condensed inspection and maintenance chart shall be prepared by the design engineer identifying the inspection, management, and maintenance frequency required for each component of the stormwater treatment system. This chart shall be submitted to the zoning enforcement officer for review prior to the issuance of the final certificate of zoning compliance. Seven, that the applicant submit documentation to the zoning enforcement officer verifying legal emergency access across the property of one oh two Wall Street prior to the issuance of a preliminary certificate of zoning compliance. In the event that changes to the approved plans are required as a result of other um agency permitting to support the proposed activity, the Madison Planning, Zoning, and Commission reserves the right to review said changes and may require modification of this approval. This approval is made based upon the finding that the proposed use is a permitted use in the district and that the standards prerequisites and conditions specified by the regulations have been met. The public convenience and welfare will be substantially served and the appropriate use of neighboring properties will not be substantially or permanently injured. The proposed use is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The effective date of this approval is September second, twenty twenty-two, and upon filing of the certificate of special exception modification on the land records.
Thank you, Shona. Um, could I have a second for that motion?
A second.
Thank you, Ron. Any further discussion? In that case, could I um move to a vote? All in favor to accept the motion as read?
Hi.
Any opposed? Unanimously uh in favor, accepted, approved. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the next uh public hearing on our agenda, which is twenty-two dash eighteen CSP for thirty-five Cottage Road. So Aaron, I think we have some
You have a group here.
A group. And we look forward to the presentation.
Everybody. Marjorie coming?
Ron Giordano, Aaron.
Giordano? Who am I missing, Marjorie?
I think you may have
landscape architect.
She's on vacation.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome, everyone.
Hello. May I begin?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Attorney Marjorie Shansky. I represent thirty-five Cottage LLC in this application, and as you can see, I've brought with me Michael Ott, professional engineer from Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors in Madison. Our architect, John Matthews. Brian Miller, who is an AICP planner, whose planning report and addendum are in the record. He's from the Miller Planning Group. Carl Giordano, who is a professional engineer from SLR Consulting. He is our traffic engineer. His report is in the record. And Joseph Verstig, who is of Verstig Associates LLC. He is our building code and fire safety code consultant, and his letter is also, and his resume are in the record. Abigail Adams, our landscape architect from A2 Land Consulting is on vacation. But I do have a short narrative of her landscaping plan to share with the commission when we get to that point in the presentation. We have come to you this evening with approvals from the Madison Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency. With approvals from both the Connecticut Department of Public Health and the Madison Health Department for the subsurface sewage disposal system. And we have a recommendation from ACHA. And that recommendation came together with a couple of recommendations, which John Matthews has already incorporated into his plans, which he will share with the commission this evening. I want to spend just a moment talking about the governing statute for this application. This is a site plan application for approval of an eighteen-unit development of one-bedroom apartments under the provisions of Connecticut General Statute's eight dash thirty G, the Affordable Housing Appeals Statute. The legislature's adoption of eight thirty G was in recognition of a longstanding housing shortage in Connecticut, which has only worsened over time. The provisions of eight thirty G, which is sometimes called a builder's remedy, effectively shift the burden from an applicant who, under normal circumstances, would have to establish their eligibility for a permit under the regulations. The burden is shifted to the commission, who, under eight thirty G, has the burden of demonstrating the protection of some substantial public interest, of which there is sufficient evidence in the record to support a denial. So the burden is on the commission, not on the applicant. And under eight dash thirty G, the applicant is also relieved of compliance with the strict standards of the underlying zoning regulations. But as you will see, and as Brian Miller will demonstrate later, the proposed development has been thoughtfully designed to integrate regulatory standards from the underlying zoning district. And the deviations from the underlying zoning district are shown in the zoning standards chart on the site plan and are also described in the affordability plan, which I'm about to discuss briefly. Momentarily. The request before the commission is for a site plan approval of these eighteen units. Twelve of the units will be market rate. By statute, thirty percent of the proposed units, in this case, six units, must be affordable units. And in accordance with the statute, three of the six affordable units will be designated for individuals or families who earn eighty percent of the area median, median income. And three of the six units will be designated for individuals or families who earn sixty percent of the area median income. And these are numbers, they're statistical numbers, and they are published by the State of Connecticut Department of Housing and by HUD. And there's a calculation that determines all of the eligibility. And this is a set-aside development, which means that the applicant has agreed that the availability of the affordable units will remain so for a period of forty years. And that will be deed restricted on the Madison land records. It is not government subsidized housing. The development is managed in accordance with the affordability plan, a copy of which has been submitted into the record. The affordability plan contains extensive information in accordance with the underlying statute um, about the mechanics of advertising, the availability of the affordable units, the income verification requirements, and all of those details. There is an affordable housing administrator who is identified in the affordability plan. And that entity and person is in charge of these mechanics. Um, and over the period of these forty years, reports will be made periodically to the town and to the commission to demonstrate compliance with the affordability requirements. From a construction finish perspective, the units are comparable. From a construction finish perspective, the units are comparable. So as you will hear over the course of the evening, the development implements goals of the two thousand thirteen Plan of Conservation and Development. And your recently considered affordable housing plan. The state of Connecticut has identified ten percent as the ratio of affordable housing in a community. That demonstrates its fair share of meeting housing needs in Connecticut. The Department of Housing maintains a list of all the towns and cities in Connecticut. Showing what percentage they are currently supporting, and that year is, that list is published every year. And when a town meets or exceeds the ten percent goal, it is no longer subject to the burden shifting regimen of eight thirty G. The two thousand twenty-one Affordable Housing Appeals List, which is the current published list. Credits the town of Madison with one point six eight percent of affordable housing, substantially under the ten percent goal. So I want to emphasize that this development will indeed increase the amount of affordable housing in Madison by six units. But as importantly, it implements another prominent goal articulated in your planning documents. And that is to diversify the housing portfolio in Madison. And make living or remaining in Madison possible for empty nesters and young professionals. For whom the most prevalent single-family home is out of reach or whose time has passed in their lives. And finally, and as importantly as all the rest of it. We're presenting to you a beautiful development that integrates seamlessly with Madison's architectural vernacular. Introduces robust landscaping that provides environmental services not previously at the site. So with that, unless there are any questions, and we encourage your questions at any time through the course of the evening. I would turn the podium over to Mike Ott.
Thank you, Attorney Shansky.
Um, good evening. Uh, for the record, I'm, I'm Mike Ox. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summerhill. Civil engineers and land surveyors with an office on Wall Street in Madison. Um, I will um share my screen if that's. If that's okay. Uh, so can the, can the commission see my screen now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, um. So, uh, there's, there's quite a bit to get into the record tonight, um, not, not just for me, and I'm, I'm also filling in. For our landscape architect, I'm going to try to give a, a best description I can of her landscape plan also. So I'll try, I'll try to do this as quick as I can, but there is, there is quite a bit uh to get into the record. Uh, this is the first time that, that, as you know, that the commission has seen. Um, seen this proposal. So um, the site is, and I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but um. So north on this, in this drawing set, north is to the right. Um, Mill Road is along the top of the sheet from left to right. Cottage Road on the left side of the parcel up and down on the sheet. Uh, this, if Mill Road, as you all know, continues to the south. To Route One, and if you were at that intersection, you'd be looking diagonally uh to the right at the entrance to Hammond Asset Beach State Park. Um, the site is approximately one point nine acres in size. Uh, it is, it currently has, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit here. Uh, it currently has two buildings on it. Um, here in the, what would be the southwest corner. And here in the southeast corner. Uh, there is a gravel, might be hard to see, but there is a uh stone surfaced. Um, driveway and parking area. Um, there is a, an existing driveway on Mill Road. An existing driveway curb cut on Cottage Road. And in between, there is a, a driveway and parking area on the site. That it's all um stone surfaced today. Uh, along the Cottage Road frontage of the parcel, there are. Um, there is pretty, pretty dense landscape material and, and trees. Um, there is, as we, I think we all know, there is a very large beech tree. Uh, at the southwest corner of the parcel. Uh, the granite stone mile marker that we're all familiar with is also located here. Uh, uh, with the right of way of Cottage Road. Um, there is a pond, as I'm sure you've all seen on, on the site. Um, the majority of the pond is located on this site. A small portion is located. On the site to the east. Uh, the site to the east is. The Hammond Asset Apartments, and they are, that parcel of land is owned by. Uh, one of the members of the um, the LLC that is the applicant for this um, application. Uh, there is a um, and I'm, I'm sure you've all seen this driving by, there's a nicely maintained lawn. Uh, all around the pond with the exception of the northern border. The northern border of the pond is wooded. Uh, and the northern portion, the northwest corner. Uh, of the parcel is also wooded. There's a very nice stone wall um, along the northern boundary. Um, the, there is a single-family residence adjoining to the north, the Hammond Asset Apartments that I mentioned. To the east, state-owned undeveloped land across Cottage Road. Um, state-owned land on the opposite side of Mill Road. The Connecticut DEEP Maintenance Facility, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, is kind of diagonally across from the site. Uh, and uh, then the, what would be the southwest quadrant. Of the Cottage and Mill intersection is also undeveloped. It's privately owned, but, but undeveloped today. Um. I think it might, at this point, so, so um, the inland wetland boundary on the parcel was. Delineated by Richard Snarsky of New England Environmental Services. It is uh, actually not an inland wetland boundary on the site, but a watercourse boundary. Uh, and it is the high water mark of the pond, which is approximately elevation five. Uh, the pond level fluctuates throughout the year. There are times we have observed it as low as elevation three. Uh, when this survey was done, if you can read that text. Uh, this was done in, the survey was done in September of twenty, and you can see that the water elevation was just a, a bit above three. The normal high water elevation is approximately five, elevation five. Um, the topography on this site, and this, this is important with regard. To stormwater that we'll talk about later, the topography is such. And the elevations of Mill Road and Cottage Road are such that. The, the, almost the entire site, with the exception of. A small portion of the driveway curb cut at Mill Road. And a small portion of the driveway curb cut at Cottage Road. The entire site drains, surface water drains into the site. Um, served today, surface water does not drain off the site. To anyone else's property or to the two roads. Um. I, I, I should, I should take that back just a little bit. Um, as I, as I described earlier, a portion of the pond, of course, is on the adjoining property. Um, the topography, uh, um, for instance. The high water elevation of the pond is approximately five. The, the ground rises up from the edge of the pond to the property boundary at this. Um, northeast corner to an elevation of, a lowest elevation of eleven. So the ground surface here is some six feet above. The high water mark of the pond, and I think that'll, I'm pointing that out because it'll, it'll become important later, later on, I think. Um, so the proposal is to, or I should say, please stop me, um, if, if the commission has any questions. Um, a, a, as I go. Um, uh, any, any questions so far?
Actually, Mike, I have a question. It's Carol speaking. Um, is the pond natural or man-made?
Um, I, I'm told reportedly that it, it was excavated in the eighties. Um, the, the, the family of the gentleman that owned it, the family that owned it, the Spiros. Um, previously, um, Mr. Spiro told me that. Um, um, so, so reportedly it was, it was excavated in the eighties. Um, our surveyor, the project surveyor. From Anderson Engineering and Surveying Associates in Guilford. They, um, Todd Anderson had indicated to me that he remembers um, working on plans for his father. For the pond uh sometime in the eighties. So by all, by, by several accounts, it's, it's an excavated pond. So they, they dug down and they basically intercepted the groundwater table. To create the pond. The pond has, um, I'm glad you asked this question, actually. The, the pond has no. Um, surface water. Um, outlet or, or inlet to it. So there's no, in other words, there's no watercourse outlet. Leaving the pond, going on to someone else's land. Uh, there's no watercourse coming into the pond, and that's, that's in part why I pointed out how high the ground is. What, what the ground elevation difference is here. This is actually the lowest elevation difference. Uh, in the northwest corner, the, the ground surface elevation rises to eighteen, elevation eighteen or so. So this is, this is quite high in here. Um. Uh, any, any other questions about the, the, the existing conditions? Um, uh, the site is, I should say, the site is served by public water. That is located uh both within Cottage Road and Mill Road. Um, the, the power and, and uh. Uh, telephone and cable television are, are overhead. I, although there is gas in Cottage Road, I do not believe that the two buildings are served by gas. Uh, these buildings were, I, I assume this building was a residence at one point. Uh, but in the recent past, I think I'm told some thirty years or so. Uh, the use of the site was an office use. The Spiros. Um, used the, uh, both buildings of, as, uh, to support their, their business, is my understanding. Um, oh, um, there is um, within Cottage Road for its full length, there is no. Formal storm drainage system. Um, there is a formal storm drainage system within Mill Road. Up nor, north of the site and along the site's frontage. There's a pair of catch basins here and a connecting storm sewer, a catch basin. Another connecting storm sewer, catch basins at the intersection. This municipal roadway storm drainage system. Discharges several hundred feet away to the southwest to a tidal wetland. I, I think it's some three or four hundred feet away from the site. Uh, it go, it, it, it goes down. We actually traced its full length. We surveyed it, actually. It goes down cot, the portion of Cottage Road on the west side of Mill. And its outlet uh lea, leaves the Cottage Road right of way and goes into a tidal wetland. Uh, up, up against the Hammond Asset Connector, actually. Um, the site is located within uh, a single-family residence R two zoning district. Uh, the site is, of course, located within the coastal boundary or the coastal zone as, as the town zoning regulations refer to it. And it's also located partially within a special flood hazard area zone. It's in an AE eleven zone. Uh, the, the development portion is within the special flood hazard area zone. Uh, the, the remainder of the site is in flood zone X, which is not. A special flood hazard area zone, and I should, should point out, uh, especially for the record, that the special flood hazard area zone. That the site is located partially within is not a coastal high hazard area zone. Um, I, I'd be glad to explain the difference, but I, I don't want to border the commission with it, with that, but. If you want an explanation or, or you need an explanation later. Um, I, I'd be glad to describe that if you're not familiar with it. Um, it is, it is of some importance, I, I think, and it's uh good to get into the record. Um, there's, there's a zoning, actually, zoning district boundaries are shown here. Uh, the, the, um. The parcel immediately to the east is actually in the T Transition Zoning District. Across the street, as you can see, is this, is a C Commercial Zoning District, and again, our parcel. Is within a single-family uh R two district, residence district. Um, I should also say that the pond is not tidal. It is not tithely influenced. Um, it, it is, um, again, it's just simply an interception of the groundwater table when, when the excavation happened. So the proposal would be to uh remove the buildings, of course, remove all of the stone driveway and parking. Um, there are, there are um several trees that would be removed, quite a few trees. Uh, that would be removed. Um. One important thing to note is that uh tree protection would be installed. Um, as far away as we can get from uh the base of the large beech tree. Uh, a, at this corner. Uh, this is the site preparation plan that we're looking at. Uh, so this is, this shows all the um. The erosion and sediment controls that will be installed. Uh, it shows the demolition, it shows what will be removed. And, and it shows the tree protection to be installed before any work starts, and there, there's notes to that effect on the, on the plan. Uh, in the, in the drawing set. Um, so the proposal is, this is the, the general plan for the. For the project, the proposal is to construct, I'm sorry, um. The proposal is to construct uh this um, three-story, I believe it is, correct me if I'm wrong, John. Um, three-story multifamily building that housed, that will house or provide eighteen one-bedroom apartments. Uh, the footprint of the building is approximately seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five square feet, approximately. Um, there is a, I'll zoom in a little bit. There is, uh, as you can see, a parking area in, in the. In the front, this kind of curvilinear parking area. There's a total of twenty-seven parking spaces. Uh, the required number of reserved spaces. Or we, we used to call them accessible, we now call them reserved spaces, um, are shown on the plan. Uh, there is a sidewalk, the shaded sidewalk that will run from Mill Road. Along the parking area in front of the building. And along the driveway and, and connect to the driveway of the parcel uh next door, the apartment complex next door. Um, uh, waste and recycling receptacle area here within an enclosure that screens it. There is a pole-mounted parking area, um, lighting for the parking lot. There, there are only four. Uh, here, here. Here and here. Uh, the only, uh, John, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think the only building mounted lighting will be. A light that are recessed underneath the building entrance overhangs. So they will not be, they will, they will, um, be recessed, the light source won't be able to be seen. And the light, of course, will be directed downward. Uh, those are, my understanding is those are required by the state building code. So that, that's the extent of the building lighting. Um. The building's utility services, water, power. Communication, telephone will come in here at the southeast corner of the site. Uh, all underground and all from within the cottage, uh Cottage Road right of way. The um septic system for the, for the building. The, the um tanks that are required for the septic system are located here. The leaching field is located in the northwest corner of the site. Uh, the first, the, the highest three rows. That you see here are the primary leaching field that will be constructed. The two lower, longer rows are um, depict the reserve leaching field area that, that typically would only be. Constructed i- i- if there was a repair required someday. Um, so the, so these two lower rows will not be constructed. We, we did this purposely to keep the leaching field. As far away from the pond. Uh, and the wetland that we're going to create around the pond, which I'll describe in a minute. So, so we kept the primary as far away as we could from the pond and the, and the new storm. from the pond and the, and the new stormwater well and that we're gonna, that we're proposing to construct. The, the septic system, because the wastewater, the, the design wastewater flow is greater than two thousand gallons per day, equal to or greater than two thousand gallons per day, requires the approval of both the local health department, Madison Health Department, as well as the state health department. We've received both of those approvals for, you know, from both agencies. Any questions so far? On the, on the proposal? Now, I'll, I'll describe the, the stormwater management system if I could before. That'll, that should be the last part of the, of the proposal and then the landscape plan. Last part of the civil engineering part, anyway. So the stormwater management system, again, the, the site in the existing condition drains inwardly towards the site. That will be the same condition in the, in the developed condition when this site is redeveloped. So the, the stormwater management system consists of a single catch basin in the parking area. Because the parking area is so small, it only requires a single catch basin. The parking area, the, the, the major portion of the parking area pavement and the sidewalks drain to this catch basin. The stormwater then enters a, what we call a diversion structure. This structure diverts the, the required volume of water, the, it diverts the volume of water that's required to be treated to a stormwater treatment structure. That's what this structure is that I'm circling. So catch basin, diversion structure, this is all below ground, stormwater treatment structure. From the stormwater treatment structure, the, the treated water flows down gradient along the side of the building and into a stormwater well, which I'll, which I'll describe in a second. During less frequent, so generally ninety percent of the rainfall events, the, the, the rainfall volume from ninety percent of the rainfall events will be directed to this stormwater treatment structure and then to the stormwater wetland. For less frequent, greater depth rainfall events, this diversion structure will allow, after the treated, the, the, the volume of water that's required to be treated goes to the treatment structure, this diversion structure will divert water to a subsurface stormwater detention system. Basically, plastic chambers beneath the parking lot that provide a storage reservoir and temporarily hold the water. That water comes out of these chambers to what's called an outlet control structure. It's, it is again below the pavement. And its function is to meter the water out of this storage reservoir at a very slow rate. And that, that water go, come, goes into the same storm sewer that the treated stormwater enters and goes to the stormwater wetland. So the stormwater management system does not discharge stormwater offsite. I, I may, I think I misspoke earlier. I wanna, I wanna restate something. In the existing condition, with the exception of very small areas of the two driveway curb cuts, all stormwater runoff goes into the site. In the proposed condition, there will be a, a, a bit larger portion of both driveways that will go offsite to Cottage Road. It's, this is all outlined in our stormwater management report. It's, it's ver- the total area is very small and it will have no effect on the town's, the municipal roadway drainage system because the area going offsite is, is so small. And actually, the, the vast majority of the area that goes offsite is comprised of lawn and landscaped areas, lawn and landscaped area. So the purpose of the stormwater management system, the, the overall purpose is to treat it, treat the water for stormwater quality and not overtax the municipal roadway storm drainage system and not send a, a significant volume of stormwater runoff ultimately to the tidal wetland, some four hundred-ish feet away. That's, that's the general purpose of the stormwater management system. All of this is designed in accordance with town standards, Connecticut D O, Department of Transportation's Drainage Manual and the two thousand and four Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. The stormwater treatment structure is considered a secondary stormwater treatment practice. They're, they are typically used in conjunction with a primary stormwater treatment practice. In this case, the primary stormwater treatment practice is the constructed stormwater wetland that's depicted in this hatched area around a portion of the pond. So, so all of the water that leaves this stormwater management system prior to be, prior to entering the ponds, will have been treated by the stormwater treatment structure. And then treatment will be provided as it temporarily ponds in the stormwater wetland. Stormwater wetland is, there's details of all this on the plans. Stormwater wetland is, is essentially an excavated area. The bottom elevation of it is excavated, excavated down to the proper elevation and make sure that the water table seasonally, especially in the summer, will be close to the bottom of the wetland so that the wetland plants that will be planted in here can, can survive and, and be ma- and be maintained. A, a small berm will be built that's set around the edge of the pond. That's this, I'm going to zoom in a little bit. That's this gray, this narrow gray strip represents the top of a very small berm that will be constructed, an earthen berm that will be planted that separates the constructed stormwater wetland from the pond. There will be times during significant rainfall events just as happens today when this pond level will rise. When it does, it also, of course, increases the water surface elevation on the adjoining property. Because we are proposing this development, we, we are proposing, and, and remember, the owner is a, a member of the LLC that is the applicant for this project. We are proposing to create a drainage easement on this adjoining property that, that formally covers the, the fluctuation in the pond level during significant rainfall events. I know, I know that was a lot. I've got a little bit more to say, so I'll stop. I'll stop now and see if you have any, any questions.
I, I have a quick question or a couple of questions. The drainage from the building? Where, where will that go?
Good, good question. I'm sorry. I completely forgot to mention. The building roof water will, so the gutter, the, the gutter and rainwater leader system goes all the way around the building. There'll be piping around the building underground and right here, this line is the outlet from that drainage system and it also will go to the stormwater wetland. And that's, that's outlined in our stormwater management report. That's part of the record also. This is, you'll see, I'm just gonna, you'll see this callout right here, six-inch PVC roof water drainage system outlet. So that's what this pipe is. So all the roof water ultimately ends up in this pipe and in, in the stormwater well. The roof water, I should tell you, under current standards of practice and D E E P guidance, does actually not have to be treated. We, we are treating it because the roof is, is typical residential roof construction like your, like your homes, most, most of our homes. It actually does not have to be treated, but we are collecting it and putting it into the stormwater well.
Just, you might have mentioned this and I missed it. I apologize if that's the case, but what, how much does this pond level rise during sort of, you know, century rainstorms or major flooding historically? And how much do you, will that be mitigated potentially by the wetlands, but also increased by the increase in impervious surface that you're putting into the, the site?
That's a, that's a gr- that's a great question. So because all the drainage is directed inward, in, in, in a, in a more typical case, when stormwater runoff leaves the site, an analysis has to be done to ensure that downstream storm drainage systems, culverts, bridges, water courses, other properties will not be damaged in any way. In this, this is somewhat unique in that all the stormwater runoff, even after the development proposal, will stay on site. It's difficult, so, so that offsite analysis i- isn't required. You, you actually can't do it. It's difficult to estimate how much the pond will rise after this is all built. However, because if you, you know, the pond is obviously not like, you can't equate it to a sealed bathtub, for instance. It, it's a little bit, it's a little bit tricky to accurately estimate how much it will rise. But, but I did a conservative analysis and assumed it was like a bathtub, that it had a bottom that was completely sealed. And in a one-hundred-year event, given the drainage area, the land area that contributes to the pond, the pond's surface would rise approximately ten inches. And if you remember, this is, actually, this is the main reason that I pointed out the topography. Again, this lowest elevation here is some six feet above the pond's normal water surface elevation. So if a rainfall event happened, when, when the pond's surface is at its normal maximum, maximum of elevation five, even if we added a foot to it, it would be at elevation six and the lowest ground here is elevation eleven. And that's, that's really why I was pointing that out. And that's true. I should show you. I don't know if you can really see this well on the screen. That's true. The rise in topography is also true on the adjoining property to the east. If I zoom in a little bit, you'd be able to see the elevation numbers. See that, the eight contour and seven and six and five? So the ground is rising up. These, if you were to go out to the site, the nine and the ten elevation contours also close on themselves. We just don't show that because the, the, it would be, it would start to get off our page. So that, that's really why earlier I was pointing out what the topographic conditions are here on the site.
Carol, I have a question too, if I could.
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
If I understood you correctly, you said that the only excess stormwater runoff that goes offsite is going to go onto Cottage Road. And then you said that the goal was not to overtax the municipal street system for stormwater runoff. But at the very beginning, you said Cottage Road has no stormwater runoff system. So I don't see how you're, you're I mean, in theory, you're overtaxing it at the very beginning and there's no way to meet your goal. If you're pouring water onto a street that has no stormwater runoff system and your goal is not to overtax it. So explain to me what seems like circular reasoning there.
Well, it's, I may not have done a good job explaining it, but it's definitely not circular reason. So I will, I will do, I will, I probably didn't do a good job. So let me start again. If you drive Cottage Road, if you go, I believe, as I recall, it's some seven hundred feet plus from this intersection of Mill and Cottage to the east, if you walk or drive along, you'll come to a high point right by a, a building on the north side that I believe is an insurance agency. And if I recall, it's about seven hundred feet east of this intersection. Between this intersection and that high point in Cottage Road, there is no formal drainage system for that seven hundred-foot length. There is, as I described earlier, these four catch basins at the intersection. If you recall, I had described the drainage system along Mill and these four catch basins at the intersection. And I, and I, I told, I, I had indicated that we actually surveyed the continue, the continuation of this drainage system west of Mill Road all the way to its outlet. That's the drainage system that I, that I'm talking about. So seven hundred feet away where the high point is, on the other side, east of the high point, water drains towards Windermere, basically.
So what you're saying is that any water that excess that comes off your site on the Cottage Road would join the water coming from that point seven hundred feet away and then flow west into those catch basins at Mill Road where the intersection is.
Exactly, exactly. And we did, and we did a, if you, if you, when you get a chance, take a look at our stormwater management report. We have, and I, I can bring that up on the screen, but we have a map shows the, the small catchment areas, we call them. And we, we described in narrative form how, how this works and how small the areas are of the site that will drain to this municipal system. And that's what I meant earlier when I said we don't want to overtax this. We made the vast majority runoff stays on the site.
Or since there's no curves, I'm not so sure that water on Cottage Road that you're putting out there is really going to go west. It's just gonna, there's nothing to sort of guide it. It won't just flow to the other side or do whatever it wants to. Cottage is not, is not set up to sort of have curves that guide all the water to Mill.
Okay, so, all right, that's, that's going to bring up the next, the next subject. So, okay, so all, all roads, including town roads in Madison, do not have curves. And, and water will flows along, we call it gutter flow. Water flows along the gutter. If you look, when you're driving around, you will see what we sometimes refer to as dirt curves. A lot of times, the road is actually just a bit lower, a few inches sometimes, than the, 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 the grass typically on the side of the road. And that's what contains the gutter flow. So that's, that's one issue. That, that's kind of an aside. What, what happens on Cottage Road is because there's, there's seven hundred feet of roadway coming all the way down to this intersection. There's very, if you, if you drive it or walk it and look closely, you'll see that there's very little opportunity for that water to go off of the road. I believe there's only one spot, actually, and it's about here, on the left-hand side, on the south side. If you go up to the site and take a look. So because there's very little opportunity for that water to leave the road along its seven hundred-foot path, it, it ponds here where Cottage Road becomes very flat. We identified months ago, before we even made a submission to the Wetland Agency, we had a meeting with town staff. We photographed the drainage conditions here and we presented it to town staff. The, the, this is just an existing condition. Cottage Road, the seven hundred feet of it mostly has a pretty good slope on it. Soon as it gets right about here in front of the site, it flattens out. So the water ponds in a significant area for the full width of the road, when the rain event- When the rain event ends, it takes some time for it to go away, but eventually it goes away. So because we recognize that. And because we also recognize that Cottage Road is, the pavement width is relatively narrow. We laid out uh, on a preliminary basis. An improvement plan to widen. A small portion of Cottage Road and provide adequate slope to the road. And add drainage to pick up the water so that it, to eliminate this ponding problem. In this very flat area right at the intersection.
What part of Cottage then was going to be approved from the property line to Mill?
Es- essentially, yes. I think it's. Two hundred and sixty feet or so.
And that's part of the plan and the commitment to the town?
Well, it's something, it's something that needs to be discussed. I wasn't, I wasn't gonna bring it up this early in the, in this process. Because you asked that question, uh, it's something that needs to be discussed with town staff. And town council. Uh, and ultimately the Board of Selectmen. But we did, I guess I, uh, my point is that we. Did recognize it. We brought it to attention to town staff early on. Um, any, any other questions about the, the, the engineering part of this? Um. I, I think I should say, if there, if there are any questions, I'll, I'll get to the landscape plan in a sec, but I should also. Tell you that. Get, make sure we get into the record a, a little bit about the special flood hazard area zone. So. Uh, actually, actually, there's two, there's two subjects to cover. Uh, one is the special flood hazard area zone. And one is the well on the adjoining property to the north. Um. Well, as I said earlier, the, the, the parcel is partially within a special flood hazard area zone. The parking in the building are, are within the special flood hazard area zone. So. It's the zone, the special flood hazard area zone is an AE eleven zone. It is not. A coastal high, what, what's called a coastal high hazard area zone. Coastal high hazard area zones are. Are ref- are known as velocity zones. They have a V designation typically, along with their. Uh, base flood elevation. And more recently coastal A zones. Have been included by FEMA and in the state building code. As coastal high hazard area zones. W- we are not located, this site is not located within a velocity zone. Or a coastal A zone. We are, we are in a spe- uh. Uh, AE eleven special flood hazard area zone. Uh, same zone that, that might exist, uh. Uh, along the Neck River. Uh, up, up near Green Hill Road. Be a different base flood elevation, but the same type of special flood hazard area zone. Residential development is not prohibited in a special flood hazard area zone. If it was um. Middle Beach Road and our whole beach community wouldn't look like it, it does today. Um, there are rules uh, that we had, that any developer has to live by. There are FEMA National Flood Insurance Program regulations. There's towns. Flood plane management ordinance, and there's the Connecticut State Building Code. That all govern how buildings within a special flood hazard. Area zone are, are to be constructed. We, we meet all those requirements. Um. That, the, the compliance with all those requirements happens at the building permit. Review stage, building permit application of review stage. Uh, the town engineer is the, is by ordinance, the flood plane manager. Uh, for the town of Madison and, and that's when, when a building permitted application is submitted. That's when compliance is reviewed and, and checked. Um. Um. The well, uh, or any, any questions about that, about that subject? So the well to the north, on, on the north adjoining property. Um, I think the street address is forty-two Mill Road. There's been a lot of. Conversation about the well. Um, I believe at about a quarter to seven. This evening, um, the town received an email about the well. Again, the town has received other correspondence about the well. Uh, I'm sure the town planner can, can explain. But I think, I think we should get the facts about the well into the record. Um, during the wetland process, during our design process. We tried to visually observe the well on the joining property. We do this on all adjoining properties. We could not visually see it. Uh, we. Searched the town's records and got obtained copies of all the town's records. Uh, uh, and that told us there was a well on the property in its approximate location. We called the Connecticut Water Company and had them search their records to make sure. Cause I, I don't think I told you, but there is public water within Mill Road. That runs north, that runs. Runs along the frontage of this property to the north. We contacted Connecticut Water to make sure that it, that. Uh, to, to find out whether they had any records of the residents. Being served by the Connecticut Water Public Water System. They do not. So we knew there was a well on the property. We, we, uh. We um, checked in with Connecticut Water to make sure the building was, buildings were served by a well. Uh, we obtained all of the town's records. We looked at historic. Um. Aerial imagery. We looked at all the building department records for all the additions that have put on, been put on the home over the years. And we estimated the best we could where this well would be. We, we then designed the leaching field. To be far enough away from the well under the requirements of the Public Health Code. At some point, and I, and I actually can't remember the exact dates, but at some point. We found that. We could see the well. The well had been covered. There was a black covering over the well. Once we could actually see the well by standing on our property. Our, the project surveyor located the well. The project surveyor. Did not have to enter the adjoining property. The, the surveyor used a reflectorless total station. To measure the location. And, and the distance uh, uh, to the well. The surveyor added that well. To his property boundary and topographic survey. And in the record, you have a signed and sealed copy of that survey. That survey was sent to the State Health Department. Uh, in addition, with the full plan set that you also, for the development. That you also have, um. Uh. In your, in your, uh, but in your record. Um, there's, there's been some discussion. By, I believe by the adjoining property owner as well as. Um, some consultants that were hired during the wetland process. That uh, there should be a one hundred and fifty foot separation distance. Between this well and the septic system. We do not believe that that's the case. Um. And I'm sorry to. Bore you with this, but this is important. It needs to get into the record. Um. So as you, as you heard, we did our due diligence. We did. I believe everything that we could reasonably do. To, to research this well. Um, there is a well completion report. The well was installed in nineteen seventy-six. Uh, um, there is a well, a nineteen seventy-six completion report in the town's files. The well driller, as, as is common practice. Did a yield test. When they installed the well. And they indicated on the well completion report. That the yield was fifteen gallons per minute. The Connecticut Public Health Code says that. A subsurface sewage disposal system. Has to be a minimum of seventy-five feet from a well. That has a required withdrawal rate, and that's important, that term, a required withdrawal rate. Less than ten gallons per minute. If the required withdrawal rate of a well is greater than ten gallons per minute. The protective well radius, the distance from a sewage disposal system. To a well increases to a hundred and fifty feet. So we, we did our, as, as you heard, we did our due diligence. We estimated where the well was. We ultimately located the well by survey methods. Um. And. There is no information in the town's records. That would indicate that the pump. Within this well. And the required withdrawal rate is greater than ten gallons per minute. A yield test. And the pumping rate of the well pump that is ultimately installed are two different things. The yield test is done on all wells. It's required by state law. There are different methods for how it is done. On this particular well completion report, the yield test was done by the baling method. There was no pump involved. The baling method is essentially dropping a. Tube into the well and pulling out water by rope, believe it or not. Uh, a prescribed number of times over a prescribed time. And then measuring the rate that the well recovers, the rate that the water surface in the well rises. The yield test is done prior to installing the actual well pump. So in nineteen seventy-six, if you look at the well completion report. The contractor checked the baling method box on the form. The, and that method of yield testing yielded. Uh, uh, um, indicated a well yield of fifteen gallons per minute. Again, the yield test is not the same as the required withdrawal rate and the pumping rate of the well. There is no information on the pumping rate of the well. Um. It is standard practice that it, it's, it's, um. Well-known in the industry. That single-family residential uses. Um. The water demand is typically three to five gallons per minute. So typically, it's my understanding from talking to several. Well contractors, typically a well contractor will install. A well pump that can pump at that rate or maybe a little greater. Uh, uh, I spoke with Sima Well Drilling and they said that they typically. Install seven gallon per minute pumps and that been true in the seventies. Sima has been in business for. A very, very long time before the seventies. Um. So we feel, the, to the best of our knowledge, by doing all that research. Uh, it's, we feel that we meet. The required separation distance to the. Uh, the neighbor's well, to the leaching field. Um, the neighbor sent, as I said, an email at about quarter to seven this morning. Indicating that the we- his well pump was going to be pulled. And he was going to provide information to the State Health Department. On the pump. That information was requested by the State Health Department of the neighbor on April eighteenth. Uh, four months ago today. There's a written record in the town's files of that request. So, uh, I'm sorry about the length of all of that, um, but I had to get that into the record. Um, and I'd be glad to answer any questions about. About the special flood hazard area zone or, or the well. And required separation distances. If you have any. Um, if not, I will do my best to describe the landscape plan and I'll make it as quick as I can.
Mike, I just have one clarifying question. This is all you.
Sure.
Uh. Well, you said, so if, if the. Residents had a demand basically of greater than. Ten gallons per minute, then it would have to be a hundred and fifty feet?
I'm not, not a demand. So the demand is a, is a, um. A design term, well, water. Um, what the health, the language the health code uses is a. Quote, required withdrawal rate, end quote. Typically, I've been, I've been doing this now thirty-four years. I have never seen a. Single-family residence, even a single-family residential property without buildings. That might have water service to them. Require more than have a, have a well that has a pump. That has a, that has a withdrawal rate greater than ten gallons per minute. That would be extremely unusual. Where you see that is, um. A school, for instance, the country school. Um, I've done work at the country school and their wells. Have a required withdrawal rate greater than ten gallons per minute. Because of the use uh, uh, on the land and within the buildings, as you, as you can imagine. But a, 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 a single-family home, it would be very uncommon. I. I personally have never seen it in thirty-four years. It doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but I, I, I've never seen it. It would be quite uncommon.
So that would be the withdrawal, required withdrawal rate of the pump itself? Now, residents?
Uh, well, it's a little. It, it's a little, um. It's a little hard to describe because the health code doesn't go any further than that. It's, yeah, it simply says, i- i- if the, and I, this is almost, I can. I can, you know, get the exact language and we can submit it into the record, but it. But it simply says if the required withdrawal rate. Is less than ten gallons per minute, the separation distance is seventy-five. If it's greater than ten, it's one fifty. This, this, I should point out, this leaching field is down gradient. In terms of surface slope, ground surface slope from this well. In other words, the well location is higher in elevation, ground surface elevation than. The leaching field. It is also. Our leaching field is also down gradient in terms of groundwater flow direction. The groundwater flow direction was documented during a wetland process by. By a wastewater engineer, um. To be towards the pond. So gra- groundwater flow direction is generally. Northwest to southeast away from the well. I think, I think that's, that's also important to, um, to make sure the commission understands and, and get into the record. I, I guess I should say again, though, at this point in time. Both the town's health department and the state health department. Have issued approvals of the subsurface sewage disposal system that would serve. Uh, this, this proposed development.
Okay, I think I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so. I'll do this as quick as I can, um, and I apologize. I'm not going to be able to do as good a job as. As Abigail Adams, but um, I think you can see. Just visually that there's an extensive planting plan being proposed. Um. Uh, there are, there are, as you can see, so all, all the symbols that you see on this plan are all. Proposed plantings. I think Attorney Shansky mentioned early on. That Abigail Adams, the landscape architect, had provided a narrative that I think Attorney Shansky will read. And in that. In that narrative, it, it, it lists the total number. Of the different types of plants that are, that are, um, being proposed. Um, if I zoom in. Quite a bit. Uh. You can see all the plantings that will be. Um, um, in the stormwater wetland. I'll, I'll zoom in one particular area. So, so this particular area, if you can see my cursor that I'm tracing, for instance. Will have seventy-five plugs. Uh, you know, wetland plantings that are, that are in plug form. I don't know what the symbol ST stands for. We can go out to the schedule. We can look at the planting schedule. You can, you can get an idea that, for instance, there will be fifty plugs. In this area. And seventy-five here and fifty here. Kind of gives you an idea of the. The amount of, um, plug-sized wetland plants. That will go into the stormwater wetland. You can also see that there are shrubs, these smaller circles. And trees, uh, that will be planted. And if I zoom. I zoom all the way out again, um. zoom in a little bit, um, there's, you know, there's extensive tree and shrub planting throughout the site. Um, Abigail has, Abigail Adams has drawn a line here. Uh, it might be hard to see, but there's, she calls it out here, separation line between lawn and no-mow mix. So what she's saying here, if you can see my cursor, is to the left of this line that I'm tracing will be maintained lawn amongst the plantings. To the right of the line will be a, a no-mow meadow mix that, that, as you can see from her notes here, would only be mown, uh, would only be mowed, um, annually. So she's proposing, there are, um, it's my understanding that there are uh, quite a few invasive, um, tree and shrub species in this area. I know there's a lot of, uh, a lanthus, tree of heaven. So she's proposing to remove all those invasives, create this meadow, provide, as you can see, uh, up in this corner, I believe these are evergreen plantings here. Um, there are additional evergreen plantings here. Um, there are, uh, this is a row of new evergreen plantings. Um, she's proposing, these are deciduous trees, all these larger circles along the frontage of Mill Road. Um, you, you can see that there are plantings by the beech tree. And, and there are other planted areas, as you can see, in the uh, no-mow area and also in the maintain lawn area. That's probably the best I could do to, to explain the landscape plan. There is a, there is a planting, as you can see on the second sheet. There's an extensive planting schedule. She has, um, she has notes and maintenance uh, requirements on her plan and I'm, and I'm quite sure, uh, if, if the public hearing does not get closed tonight, that she'll be available, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, I hope, I hope that helps. I, I think that might be the best I could do.
I have a quick question. You might not be able to answer, but it looks like she's putting in quite a lot of screen plantings on both the east and west side, but not along the north boundary. Is there a reason for that?
Um, it's, it's wooded today. I, I think she, I think, uh, hopefully I'm not getting this wrong. I think she intends to take out the invasives, um, plant evergreens here and here. There are, I believe, I, I'm ninety-nine percent sure there are evergreens on the adjoining property along the stone wall also here. I need, I'm tracing with my cursor.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, so I, I think that's it for me. I'm sorry that was so long. Um, I think you might, might, um, you're now going to hear, uh, uh, from Carl Giordano and the exciting, um, topic of traffic engineering. If that, if, does that make sense, uh, Marjorie?
Unless you want John to show the building.
Why don't we, um, Carl, are you okay with coming up next?
I am, whatever works.
Okay, yeah, why don't we, because it, it's kind of related, it's related, of course, it's engineering and at least the engineering part will be done with when Carl, after Carl's presentation. Do you want me to stop sharing, Carl?
Yeah, I'll pull up, uh, I'll pull up my screen.
Okay.
Let's see. Sharing that. All right, can you see the full slide?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
We're, we're seeing the presentation mode, Carl, not the full slide. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I see. Um, let's try, sorry. Share. This screen. Okay. How's that?
That's screen.
Okay, uh, so for the record, I'm Carl Giordano, licensed professional engineer with SLR located at one ninety-five Church Street in New Haven. Um, we were tasked with doing the traffic study and, uh, traffic engineering and transportation planning services for this project. So I'm gonna walk through the traffic study that we did and the key findings there. Um, so just a brief overview of our scope. As you can see, by the star on this map, it's where our site is. Uh, we primarily looked at the intersection of no, of, um, Mill Road and Cottage Road and the driveways that, uh, we had proposed with the development. And we did that primarily because the traffic is pretty low volume, uh, in this area. Um, I understand that it, uh, it fluctuates a bit seasonally, but, um, overall during the typical periods that we look at, um, as it relates to, um, you know, the typical use of, uh, the building as a residence, um, the traffic volumes were pretty low. And we found that, um, that there wouldn't be too much interaction between, um, other developments over to the east along Cottage Road, um, east of Dudley Lane, um, and our site. Just because of how the, the roads will be used and, uh, the way we anticipate traffic will be flowing through the area. Um, so we selected as our study area, um, primarily this, this intersection here, as Mike was talking about. And we reviewed the existing traffic conditions, uh, performed traffic counts there, uh, looked at tra- uh, crash history. And I think the only crash that, um, that occurred was at the intersection to the south here, Boston Post Road. And, uh, it, there was only one in the, within the past three years and it wasn't anything that, um, struck as, you know, being a pattern or anything like that. And there, there weren't any other crashes to be, uh, noted closer to the site. After, after we looked at the existing conditions, uh, we estimated the traffic that the site would produce and what future condi- conditions of traffic would look like around the site. From there, we determine our typical, um, traffic operations impact around the study area. And also for the study, which we don't, um, typically always look at, um, we looked at parking demand and estimated based on industry standard data as well as, uh, some other data that we collected from similar residences in the area, uh, how much parking we thought, uh, would be generated by this at peak, peak times. One of those properties was, uh, the, the new apartments immediately, uh, to the east of the site. And others, uh, I'll note later. And from all that, we had some recommendations and findings, uh, which you can see on this slide. Um, as I said, uh, this area is a pretty low-volume road, uh, low-volume area. And as Mike had talked about earlier, that Cottage Road is currently seventeen to eighteen feet wide um, and serves as a slow, uh, neighborhood road. So the low traffic volumes and narrow nature of the road kind of work hand in hand. We estimated based on our industry data, um, the development of eighteen, eighteen apartment units would only generate ten new vehicle trips. Uh, that includes trips going into the site and out of the site during either the morning or afternoon peak hour. Which is very, very minimal traffic. This will create no noticeable impact to traffic in the area. Um, as you can imagine, if you have um, five trips going into the residences, five trips going out over the course of an hour, that, that's not going to, uh, create a noticeable impact to the area. Um, and that's based on the small number of units that are proposed. In addition to traffic generation, we also looked at, um, access for the site, um, particularly as it relates to the town of Madison's, uh, emergency vehicles. Uh, we were in contact with, um, the town's department and we, uh, used the specifications for the fire trucks that they use, um, to create turning templates and, uh, assess how traffic would be, um, how those, how those large vehicles would, uh, go into and out of the site. I'll show you how those look after this, um, but, um, they do, they, they, the access for emergency vehicles will be, will be good as is if, um, even as the the roadway width of Cottage Road stays the same, um, access by fire trucks will be, um, perfectly adequate. I'm gonna skip ahead. These four images show um, those turning templates. The two on the top show that, starting in the top left, uh, a fire truck um, entering from Cottage Road, turning right and then leaving the site, turning right onto Mill Road, um, can do so with the proposed site geometry and the existing Cottage Road geometry. Um, the same can be said in the reverse direction with fire truck entering from Mill Road and exiting via Cottage Road and heading eastbound. Um, the bottom two s- slides show that, um, the movements on Mill Road are adequate, but, um, based on the narrow road and, of Cottage Road and the, the site layout, um, the fire truck would not be able to, um, make that turn, turning left into the site from Cottage Road or turning right out of the site onto Cottage Road. Uh, so even though these movements down here, um, wouldn't work under, uh, these proposed conditions, uh, the two movements up here, uh, we would recommend for fire truck access. We reviewed site distances, um, from the site driveways, which are existing. And, uh, they satisfy the Connecticut Department of Transportation guidance and criteria. And we also looked at the site, site distance when you are looking left from Cottage Road onto Mill Road. Um, because of the curvature of Mill Road and some of the existing overgrown vegetation along the, the left side. The site distances, uh, obscured a little bit. That is an existing condition, but it can be improved with just some trimming and, uh, clearing of overgrown vegetation there. Um, and that'd be an improvement to existing conditions. We also made a recommendation in the report that, um, there, presently, there's a speed limit sign, um, posted for twenty-five miles an hour, uh, just a little bit north of Cottage Road. Um, so when you're initially coming onto Mill Road from Boston Post Road, um, there's no immediate, um, indication to the driver what the speed limit is. Um, so we made the recommendation that, um, that speed limit sign either be moved or another be posted, um, before Cottage Road. So drivers, so reinforces to drivers, uh, what the speed limit is and, uh, re- kind of reinforcing the site distances. And lastly, for our parking demand analysis, um, we, we looked at the air, the several area, um, residences and their peak parking generation. And we essentially created a parking demand ratio for each one. We took an average of that. In addition to that, we compared it to our industry standard data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And to see how that parking generation rate would compare to, uh, our site. And a parking demand of twenty-four vehicles, uh, was the maximum of the data that we looked at. And in using some sources, uh, it was estimated to be less. And proposed number of parking spaces, uh, exceeds that by three, so, uh, the parking should be quite sufficient. Those were our main findings, uh, so I'll open the forward questions.
So I, I have a quick question about the fire engines. So you're proposing that they come down south on Mill Road, is that right? And then turn in. Um, coming from the south. So, I mean, coming from the north to the south. But that is pretty far out of their way, right? They have to go, so presumably they're coming from downtown Madison. They would have to go all the way up the connector to New Road, right? And then cut down Mill Road from there. I don't know how much time that would add to their getting to the fire, but it seems like it would be, you know, on the order of five, maybe more minutes than that. Um, I just wonder if the, I, I'm, I'm not sure if you said this, if the fire department was okay with this arrangement. This, this seems like it would add quite a bit to their trip.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, I, uh, when we were looking at, at these, uh, these access plans, um, I recall the fire station being north along Mill Road and that being consideration. Um, like you said, there could be an instance where they're coming from downtown Madison. For that type of question, I might lean on, uh, on, on Joe who might know a bit more of the particulars about, um, the fire department access. Um, that was our initial consideration for that.
I think I could, I could help Carl if that's okay.
Sure.
Yes.
Can the commit, can the commission hear me now?
Yes, we can.
So, um,
Identify yourself for the record.
Well, um, I'm, uh, so I'm, again, I'm Mike Ott, uh, licensed professional engineer and land surveyor. The, the downtown fire department and Carl, Carl's not, you know, Carl's not familiar, that familiar with Madison, but, um, the downtown fire department, as we all probably know, is located to the west in the, our town on Route One. Um, there is, as Carl, I think, was indicating, as you guys, you all know, the North Madison Volunteer, uh, Company is, is way up north. Um, Carl, Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the lower, your lower-left analysis diagram shows a fire apparatus, um, are you showing a fire apparatus leaving the site or, or both entering and leaving, um, entering and leaving the site?
Um, the bottom left shows, if you can see my cursor, I'm not sure, but in the red.
The green, uh, the green movement on Mill Road is the one I'm.
Right. So that's, that's the fire truck leaving the site and that works. It's this red one, the, the fire truck entering the site, um, from the south, from Cottage. That doesn't work.
But does the, would the fire truck, if a fire truck came north on Mill Road from the south, heading north, would the? From the south, heading north, would the fire truck enter the site from Mill Road?
Yes, yes, it could.
That, okay, that's the one, that's what I was looking for, so. And Carl, Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, but. The, the downtown fire department is definitely located to the west on Route One. If, if the department was responding. Fire department on the fire house, they would head east on Route One out of town. They would take a left on Mill Road and then they would take a right into the site. Is that, does that make sense, Carl, from a turning movement standpoint?
Correct, yes. And then it could take the right out at Cottage. And make that movement totally okay.
And if, if the fire department happened to be out on another call. And they were responding from the north and they were coming down Mill Road in the southerly direction. I think the upper-left diagram indicates that. The apparatus could enter the site. From the north, traveling south on Mill Road, is that, is that correct, Carl?
Correct.
Um, and I, by the way, these, the apparatus that Carl used is Madison's largest fire apparatus, the um. The ladder truck.
Right. So we use those specs right from, from the town. Is that uh helpful for your question?
Yeah, that's very helpful, thank you.
Uh, I had a couple, I had a couple of questions, Ron Bodenson. I, again, I thought your study said that the fire truck leaving could not turn left onto Mill Road, are you saying that it can?
Um, it can, yes.
Okay. Alright, that's.
Showing this one here, it can leave on, to, to the left onto Mill Road.
And you, you've interchangeably used the phrase large trucks and fire trucks, uh, large vehicles. You, you're not limiting your statements just to fire vehicles, are you?
No, uh, the fire vehicle would be the largest. Um, we did look at. Single unit trucks for your typical. Trash and trash pickup, for instance.
You did, you did or did not?
We did.
Okay, so would a school bus, a uh snowplow, a garbage truck? You, tonight you said large vehicles, those would be the same kind of vehicles as a fire truck that would have whatever problems there are. That, that you described, correct?
Right, I, I'm, I don't know what the particular uh school bus um pickup and drop-off scenario would be at this point. But the fire truck should be the largest and uh. You know, kind of.
Well, it's not, it's not larger, i- is it than uh a moving truck? I mean, we have eighteen apartments going in, people are gonna move in, moving trucks can be a lot longer than a fire truck, can they not be?
But those, those should, shouldn't be fine based on our analysis as well.
Be fine, when, but by fine, uh, I g- I guess what I'm focusing on is a fire truck is on the site. And it's come in from Mill Road and it's turned in and now it has to exit. It cannot exit going right or. West on Cottage Road, is that not true according to your study?
That's correct, it uh, sorry, it can't, it can't go. It can't take a right.
Can't go west, right? And you said it was, and you said it was a combination of the width of the road and the size of the vehicle.
Right.
Does it also have to do with the fact your driveway is, has a skewed angle or not, is that not a factor?
Um, it, they, all are factors, um, the driveway is configured to uh, to meet the requirements. Um, but, and it wouldn't be able, it wouldn't meet, if the driveway alone was reconfigured. Uh, that wouldn't solve the issue per se.
If the driveway were reconfigured and, and Cottage Road were normal-sized width instead of seventeen feet. Then would the fire truck be able to exit right?
Uh, most, most likely, uh, we haven't gone as far as to analyze that, though.
But you, you're not sure, but, but uh, the fact of the matter is uh. So, uh, but you do accept the fact there are large trucks, like. Moving vans, school buses, cement trucks, snowplows in the wintertime. That are gonna be as long as a fire truck, right?
Right, generally as the fire truck is the, the largest.
Okay. Alright, so the only thing then the fire truck can do is turn left or. West on Cottage Road, correct?
Yep, to the west or from the west on Cottage are the trouble spots.
Alright, so you're, what I'm getting at is your assumption that you gave us when you started out. Is you say there's going to be little traffic intera- interaction. To the east on College Road, based on the traffic at your site. And you said that's good because you called it a slow neighborhood road with low volume. But am I right that every single truck that exits from your site? That's long enough is going to have to turn west. On, excuse me, have, it's gonna have to turn east on College Road. And head towards the area you said would have no traffic impact.
Sure, uh, those less frequent, larger vehicles that um. Can make the, the westbound turn onto Cottage. Many to go in that direction, but those are the less frequent types of trips than your everyday.
Yeah, well, yeah, maybe the garbage truck will come once a week and the. Bus every day, I don't, uh, it's hard to say, you haven't done a traffic study on, on that apparently, but. So when they go east on Cottage, how are they going to get onto Route One, because that's what they want to get on?
Right. Either via. Sorry, was somebody saying something?
I'm sorry, Carl, that was me, um, go, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Cause if you look at it, you see Dudley Road, you must be familiar with Dudley, cause you've mentioned it, correct?
Right.
So, and you see that's a skewed turn, is it not, because Dudley is coming in at an angle? Okay, then if you go up further to the right, you will then get to. Where there's a normal entrance to Route One. Uh, just past uh Windermere, correct?
Right, it, it would be one of those two options, we, we didn't look at the turning paths of a truck, um, this radius is quite big. But I don't want to assume uh anything, so.
Yeah, well, you, well, what you assumed is that there would be no. Uh, impact, uh, uh, traffic basically heading east, but. I think what we know is that every truck is going to have to head east. And they may or may not be able to make the turn at Dudley, cause is, is it true that Dudley is also angled, right?
Right.
It's, it's not meeting at a ninety degree, alright.
That's right, yep. So there, there is, so instead of saying absolutely zero impact, it's, it's very negligible, those, you know, those types of. Trips are already happening on the road. Those trucks are figuring out the best way to get back through one.
Excuse, excuse me. What trips are happening from your site today? You said the trips are already happening, your, your site hasn't been built, there's nothing happening.
Right, sorry, I mean, I mean, other existing trips on, on the road, um, not related to the site.
Okay, um. Then you also mentioned the, I think you've acknowledged that the site view at Mill and Cottage, as you look to the south. A mill is coming from Route One is curved and then it takes, then it makes a bend. And you said that partly explains the lack of visibility to the. From that intersection left, south, correct?
Right, so. General direction.
Right, and then you also said that there's vegetation there that is a problem.
Overgrown branches, um, general maintenance, sort of things.
And then you said a, 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 a speed sign would be helpful, but. That's, you know, that obscurity has been there for years and that didn't just happen. It, it's overgrown, there's no speed limit, so the town in the last five, ten years. Has not done anything to improve the, the site view at that location, have they? Do you or not?
I, I, could I, Carl?
You know.
A little bit here.
Sure, yeah, I don't know, like, uh, you know.
So, so this is Mike Ott again for the record. A couple of things, um. Uh, the town's Department of Public Works has in fact very recently cut back brush. I've walked road several times and I see, I could see the relatively fresh cut marks. So the town's Public Works Department has, I don't know when. They have cut back brush. I, I think I need to say for the record that I am the town's former director of public works and town engineer. And I know that when I worked for the town, we maintained the sightline at that intersection. Uh, to the south. I have on, on another topic, just to answer your question, I think to try to answer your questions. I have personally measured all of the town's vehicles, school buses, ambulances, fire apparatus. Six-wheel dump trucks, which are the town's public works' largest vehicle, six-wheel dump truck towing a trailer. And, um. School buses will not enter this site, Durham School Services will not enter this site. To pick up or drop off children, they will do that on Mill or Cottage, we will. Um, if you'd like us to, we will talk to them and have them give, give us that in. Um, sites are not designed for con- for the movement of concrete trucks during the construction period. Driveways are very different and there's temporary construction entrances that allow concrete trucks. To enter and exit sites, um. It is, Carl is correct that the town's ladder truck. Is clearly the largest vehicle that would have to enter this. We do not know what type of moving trucks might be used by the different residences. But moving trucks, as you've all seen, sometimes park in the road and offload and load. Um, you know, sites like this are not designed for the, uh. It, it's common practice to design a site like this for the largest emergency service responder. And that would be the town's ladder truck, if this was a supermarket, for instance. We would be designing it for very long tractor trailers. There are design vehicles for sixty-foot plus, even longer, I believe, Carl, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, tractor trailers, that, that, that's when we would be using a, a very long design vehicle. But in this case, it's standard engineering practice to design it for the largest. Fire apparatus, if that helps you, and I think what Carl meant earlier when he said that. These trips, I think Carl's words were these trips are happening today, I think what Carl means is that. It's quite possible that the town of Madison's ladder truck has traveled up and down Cottage Road for one reason or another. In the past and school buses, we have to check on the routes, but school buses probably go up and down Cottage Road also. And so do garbage trucks and oil trucks and all, all of that, I think that, I think that's what Carl was trying to, trying to say, if that helps, Ron.
Yeah, but you would agree that any, any truck leaving the premises. Uh, from the driveway exiting on Cottage Road. Uh, it's going to want to get to Route One and it's gonna want to make a right turn to get to the intersection of Mill. So they're gonna make a left turn to go to Route One, I mean, that's, that's, that's what they're gonna want to do, is that true? Okay, so then, and, and are you agreed that most vehicles probably. Large trucks would be able to make that turn as long as they can turn right. Using the entire width of, of Cottage Road, they may have to go into the lane of oncoming traffic. But they'd quickly get over to the right side and get to that intersection.
Yes, and, and, and that is standard practice also on a low-volume road like this, it certainly wouldn't be standard practice on Route One. Uh, but, and I should, what I wanted to add too is, this is why. Uh, and I think when we come back next time, we'll show you. Uh, an analysis with the road widened, and this is why, as I said earlier, we identified the town staff. Very early on, that Cottage Road was very narrow, as well as the drainage.
Well, let me advise you, the town has been advised of that for the last four or five years. And your plans show twenty-twenty, so the town has known for the last at least two years. That something was going in there, cause some of your plans are twenty-twenty. Has the town taken any steps to widen Cottage Road on the entire two-thirds of a mile uh length?
I, I don't know, but I can tell you from my experience that that's not how the town's planning works, so that's a separate issue.
Okay.
I will say, yeah, I will, I will say that. Uh, you could point at me and you could say, why didn't I propose widening it?
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure I asked that, I wonder. My, my point is, what you're relying on is the town to do something in the future that it may or may not do, but. But the town hasn't done anything for years and there's no plan to do anything, but, but. Uh, that's what I'm concerned about, I thought maybe you had a deal with them, but apparently not.
No, we haven't, like I, like I said earlier, I think I, I had said, um, this, this off-site improvement topic, widening and draining. Gonna take some discussion with town staff and ultimately select them, that's, that's how the process works. So, we'll know, we'll know more about that before the next meeting, I'm sure.
Madam Chairman, Joe Verstig, um, I'm out of turn, but I wanted to address this before we got off topic, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Joe.
Yes, thank you. Uh, as I said, I was gonna bring this up and discuss it uh under my presentation, where we dealt with building code and fire code and, and the fire prevention code, which actually governs this. Um, but since we've, we've talked about this, the fires, safety code and the fire prevention code. Uh, have some very specific requirements for fire department vehicle access into a site. Um, for firefighting and operational um activities, and they have all been met in this design. It requires the truck be able to get in, we've used the look, the largest, most demanding fire truck that they have. It meets the turning radius, the road width is the proper width. You're even allowed to have what they call a dead end, um, where you can back out a fire truck. And that's arbitrarily set in the code at one hundred and fifty feet, how many jurisdictions give us one sixty, one seventy, depending on the quality of their drivers and so forth. In this situation, we have the ability to drive through. Now, optimally, you may not be able to make a turn in the most. Optimal direction you want to go, but you can drive through and not trap the fire truck, and they have access to both in and both out. Um, so it is compliant in all respects with regards to the fire safety code and the fire prevention code.
Yeah, I, I assume that, right.
Thank you, Joe, could you identify yourself fully?
Sure, it's Joe Verstig.
And you are?
Oh, I'm representing the uh, the appellate here, um, the fire safety code and building code consultant.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready to move on and, and John Matthews, are you presenting tonight as well? You're muted. There we go. Sorry, we couldn't hear you.
Yes, I, I am, and, and Mike Odd is gonna put up my drawings. So I'm John Matthews, architect, eight seventeen Boston Post Road, Madison, and also a town resident for quite a few years. So Mike, could we, uh. Put up the architecturals? Basically, we have eighteen units, which are like nine duplexes. And these plans you're looking at show on the left, the very first floor, the ground floor. There's an entrance, uh, that comes into a living room, dining room, kitchen, bathroom, bedroom. It's pretty classic, one bedroom unit. And then on, there's an entry porch that has two doors. The first door is to this unit, the second door is into a stairway. That comes up to the second floor, which has a much larger unit, it's still a one bedroom. But there's a living room, dining room, kitchen, and then there's a balcony in the back that overlooks the pond in the rear. And then the stair goes up to a hallway. And the main, the bedroom is on the rear facing the pond. There's washer dryer, mechanical, walk-in closet, uh, big bathroom, and then we have an open loft area, so this. This upper unit has some additional space, and that's repeated nine times. To create the building, so Mike, let's go. To the next slide. Well, actually, this, this is a similar, a plan because three of the units, we overhang. One foot six over the front of the building, but the layout is the same, it just means this loft area and the kitchen. Area gets a little larger, so let's go to the overall floor plan, Mike. So. Maybe you can window in on the bottom one, Mike. So this is the first floor in front, there's the walkway in front of the parking. There's a walkway between the sidewalk and each one of these porches, so again, you come in to the first floor unit. And there's nine of those, and six of these are the affordable units. Uh, and then there's the stair that goes up to the second floor, so let's go up to the second floor. And again, you can see the nine units, this is the plans that we submitted. When we met with ACA a week ago, there were some suggestions about some minor changes. Which I've actually incorporated and sent back, uh, to, to the commission, which, uh. Essentially where you see this little bay here, we made it a bigger bay because that's the. Side of the building that faces, uh, Mill Road, so we made a much, uh. Larger architectural element on the end of the building, plus it gave some additional space and is a dining room. And that also occurs on the right, on the east end, if you slide that forward by, or to the left rather. You can again see, see the small bay there, but now it's a twelve and a half foot wide bay where that was, I think about eight. And it goes all the way to the floor, so it's not like a window seat. So let's go to the next slide, Mike. So again, that, this is the top floor, again. Where you come up to a hallway, laundry, mechanical, bedroom, bath. And then it's a law, open loft area, and again, um. We've increased that bay to a twelve and a half foot wide bay, which we do have plans that were submitted, and if. Maybe we could get to those, it would make sense, Mike. Then above that, there's an attic under each one, there's a pole downstairs located in the closet, and there may be some mechanical equipment there. And this just shows where we have a series of dormers and gable roofs and stuff. But the elevations will be pretty, uh, clear, you can see where. This unit here, this unit here, and this unit here, we, we. At the second and third floor, we extended it out eighteen inches to break up the facade. That, which you'll see in the elevations. Mike, could, could, could we go, let's quickly go to the elevation that was originally submitted here. So this is the elevation at the top that you would see from the intersection of Mill and Cottage Road. Again, on the left, those are, those are stacked two units. This is where the second and third floor comes out eighteen inches. That occurs again here, that occurs again here, so it gives us the ability to add a lot of architectural detail. When we met with the design review committee, they felt that. These roofs were too repetitive, so we, in the new elevation, you'll see. This location, this location, this location, and this location. We changed the porch roof to a shed roof rather than a gable roof, and again, on the ends, you move up just a little like. Where we had this little bitty bump on the, on, on the side, it's now a, a larger. Element with a big gable roof, which really, uh, adds a lot of character to the building, and it gives them much. This elevation on the right is what you see from Mill Road. Uh, these elements you see are, are, uh, surface mounted air conditioning. But there's a lattice fence in front of them, so you would not see them. So Mike, can, can we find those new colored ones that we sent?
I have those, Mike, if, if you don't have them accessible.
Yeah, I sent those to you yesterday and again today, I think, Mike, if, if you have them.
You did, John, but I'm, I'm, I, I'm not, I'm not seeing them, you definitely sent them.
Um. Aaron, do you have those up?
Yes, if you stop sharing, Mike, I can, I can.
Thanks, Erin, I, you, you did send them, John, I just can't put my fingers on them.
Right, okay, so, uh, we, we had this great meeting with the, with ACA a, a week ago, and they had some suggestions. You know, one of which was to change these roofs on certain units because of how the. The gable roof hit into the side of the building because there's a big step back there. Which we converted these to shed roofs, and then we added, uh, deep blue color to the pairs of doors. And then on the side, on the bottom right there, Erin, if you could squeeze it up a little bit. This is this element now that's on these, this is the elevation that faces Mill Road. Other than that little tiny sort of bay window, now we have a nice big bay with a gable roof. And I think it really added a lot to the project, that was a great recommendation from ACA, and we jumped right on it, and I make these changes. And, uh, then if we go to the right. Keep going, thi- this is the detail of all the materials that were submitted, these are composite. Clavards, they're all in a, in a gray color with white trim, we have architectural, uh. Weathered wood shingles, and then we have either a, a copper or a green patina roof over the two. Um, cupolas that we put there, which we felt really gave the building sort of a distinct flavor. And then, and between, there are these shed dormers that are going to the attic, they're strictly for visual. There's no really occupiable space other than some mechanical up there. Just like we have the doghouse, two doghouse dormers on either end of the building. Again, they're real dormers, but there's no occupiable space there. There's just a pull down ladder that gives access to that attic space. So, so this is what you see from the public, this front elevation, you'll see the two side elevation. The rear elevation, which is down from below, which is not colored up, that's what faces the pond, these, uh. Dark areas that you see there are the balconies that come off the living room of the upper floor unit, so these. Units have a French door that goes out to a balcony, and they look at the pond, which has a great view. And then down below, because this is in a flood zone, as Mike mentioned, our first floor is elevation thirteen. If you recall, Mike said the pond is at five, so our first floor is eight feet above. What's the typical high water mark in the pond is, because we have a crawl space. And because it's in a flood zone, we have flood vents that ventilate and drain the crawl space, which are these elements that you see at the bottom. So, so, uh, you know, if we move over again to the right, you can sort of see the materials. Again, we have different size, uh, clavard, these bays that come out here where we projected them, they're like. Six inch clavard, and then the body of the clavard is like an eight inch clavard, or could even be ten. Just to give it some sense of different scale, and then the weathered wood shingles we submitted. Should, should be in the file, uh, which we should show to ACA, you know, actual samples of, of the material. I don't know if we have that. But it's essentially white composite trim, it's composite, uh, siding, and it's weathered wood. Shingles.
Those samples are online, uh, John. Uh, in, in the, in the document materials, those, uh, images, those samples are, are available, those were submitted as part of the record.
Okay.
I can share those if.
But it's, it, it's, it's pretty typical materials that are used today, they're very durable. Uh, and these buildings would have a residential sprinkler system in them to put for people's information. On the, uh, east side of the building, if you slide it over to the right a little, Erin. We have these, uh, enclosures here, there's water. Water, sprinkler, cable television, uh, TV, electrical. And then these are gas meters here, if, if we want to do gas, we could end up doing all electric with P pumps, but. We've shown if we did gas, that's where the gas meters would be. And they're really screened off from the street, and if you look at the landscape plan, there's a lot of landscaping in front of these. And then we have composite shingles and these gable ends. Uh, which again have the same color, but they have a different texture, and so they read quite differently. I mean, this is a very subtle building, we didn't want to make it garish and make, you know, reds and yellows and whatever. Nice sort of New England grays and whites with deep blue doors. So are, are there any questions about the architecture?
John, I'd, I'd just like to, this is Carol, I'd like to just confirm, so the height of the buildings. Is really because you felt you had to elevate them because they're in a flood zone or part of. And, um, and that crawl space is how tall underneath?
Well, I think the crawl space is eight, our floor is thirteen, it, it's about four feet.
And you're showing all the cat, all the mechanicals are on the out exterior of the building.
There's no mechanicals in the crawl space, o- other than some gas piping or something.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, just a quick question, I noticed that, um, there are no porches off the back for the first floor. Um, unit, and I assume that's because you need that extra height for the flooding, is that right? It, this would be nice to have some outdoor space for those first floor units.
Yeah, with, with that, uh, in order to support any kind of porches there, we would have to get into the flood. Backup setback area where the balconies at the second floor are up in the air and you're cantilevered off the building. Because the first floor is roughly, uh, from the grade we have there. Uh, thirteen, and they, they're like going five feet up by the time we tried to do some kind of balcony or porch. We're in, in the setback of the flood zone. So we have qu- quite a variety of different sizes, like the first floor units are one bedrooms. And they have, uh, effectively eight hundred and thirty-five square feet. The upper floor units go from anywhere from seventeen twenty-eight to eighteen nineteen. Because of the overhangs and those bays we put on the end, so they're very generous units. You know, they're not, I've, I've done a ton of, uh. HUD subsidized pa- housing in, in my history, I've probably done over, oh, a hundred thousand units. And, you know, we used to do four hundred square foot units, I mean, for one bedrooms, these are like twice that size. So, so these are not really low income housing, they're affordable, but. But they're also, you know, like market rate housing. Thirty, you know, s- six of the units are affordable and twelve are market rate.
Ron, you're muted.
Yeah, th- they do look, uh, generous and comfy, I, I guess I was wondering. Why then are the, the, uh, some of them two bedrooms where they're eighteen hundred square feet? I noticed that on that second floor, it says an open loft, is that just another? Well, I, yeah, I know it doesn't say bedroom, but I mean, is that an invitation that it could be a bedroom because? There's so much room and.
Because it's open and it does not qualify as a bedroom.
Okay, is it, well, what is the size?
Where you could have a TV room, you can have an office, you can have a little den, you know, so it's a much more generous unit. Because we have a variety of sizes, so we, you know, serve different. Different capacities, we have probably single people and couples, probably no kids here, or. Because technically, they're all one bedroom units.
Technically.
Actually. They're all one bedroom units.
Yeah, that's what, I used his word, I.
Understood, uh, and I, I think next is, uh, Mr. Verstig again, uh, briefly.
Thank you.
Good evening, I guess officially it's my turn. My name is Joe Verstig, uh, I'm an independent building and fire safety code consultant retained by the applicant in this project. You have my CV and you have my, my one page letter that was submitted. Uh, regarding my, my independent review and position on the, the degree of compliance of the building. Just for those listening and those that haven't read my CV. Um, I'm a licensed building official in the state of Connecticut, I'm a certified fire marshal in the state of Connecticut. Uh, I'm, I'm a certified fire protection specialist with the National Fire Protection Association. In a former life, I was with the state fire marshal's office in Connecticut. For seventeen years where I was the chief of technical services, so all building code, fire code. Uh, activities reported directly to me, I came up through the ranks from inspector to supervisor to manager. For the last twenty-five years, I've been an independent consultant on an international basis. Uh, dealing with building codes and fire safety codes and the like. Um, for this project, um, I've independently reviewed what you have before you, building plans as well as site plans. And determined that they're in compliance with both the current building, fire safety and fire prevention codes, as well as the proposed documents, which. The anticipated date of the proposed documents becoming effective is, they say October of this year. But we don't know, that could be November, December. But we don't know, that could be November, December. So we looked at it for both ways, just to make sure that there were no surprises. When we deal with this type of building, you'll notice that on my resume, I have quite a bit of experience sitting on the national committees that write the rules for residential occupancies. And, and in reviewing this project, as the designer said, when you look at construction materials, type of construction, arrangement of the egress, as well as a sprinkler and all the other fire protection safeguards that go into a residential occupancy, this is going to be compliant. We know it's going to be compliant because the building code and the fire code and the state statute require that construction documents be prepared by the architect. Uh, that takes the documents before you and grows them to about two hundred and twelve pages. In addition, there are written specifications, eight and a half by eleven, that detail everything from the type of materials that will be on the outside of the building, probably twelve pages of details related to the shingles, as well as identifying all of the details for the residential appliances within the building. All of that information is packaged and submitted to the building official and the fire marshal in Manchester or in, um, in Madison for review for a determination as to whether there are any lapses in design, missing information. And once they determine substantial compliance, only then do they issue the building permit. And then we ensure compliance with the building permit and the manner of workmanship and the requirements of the code by required onsite inspections by both the building official and fire marshal before certificate of occupancy is issued, which would then allow occupancy by residents. So as you can see that the code is very comprehensive as what's far as safeguards go into the building, how they're managed, how they're insured. Uh, and don't forget that the fire marshal has follow-up inspection requirements on a yearly basis uh, and also has the authority to enter premises based upon complaint. Should someone make a complaint or he feels the condition is, in the building is deficient. If you have questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, Joe. I think we're good. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. And Brian Miller, man chair.
Thank you.
Good evening. Now, may I share the screen, please?
Yes, and could you please identify yourself?
Oh, sure. What are you seeing now? My name is Brian Miller. I'm a, uh, a planning consultant. I've been working as for towns and cities for over forty years. My, uh, resume was in the packet. Um, and I worked as a town planner as well. Now, do, do, what are you seeing now?
Ryan, we're seeing your name. We, we don't even see you.
Good. I'm glad you don't see me. How about now?
Now is good.
Okay. I don't want you to see me right now. It's getting late, you know? I was asked to analyze the, the application as to conformance with, um, uh, planning documents that, that the town may have, as well as state statutes and, um, overall, um, um, planning practice. And the report I submitted was dated in December of twenty twenty-one. I assume you have it. Subsequent to my preparing and submitting the report, the town accepted or adopted their affordable housing plan. And that, so that was not addressed in my original report. However, I did submit a letter, I think, uh, on Tuesday of this week that I, I assume, I understand is in your packet, kind of analyzing how the, the affordable housing plan kind of fit, um, together with, um, this application as well. But let me, let me start, I'll get to that in a few moments. And, and again, I'm, I'm trying to be cognizant of the late, uh, of, of the late time of the, of the evening here. The findings, I analyzed the appropriateness of the proposal, you know, from the, our community planning perspective. And again, I've done this a lot, and particularly for multifamily. It conformed, the, the proposal conforms with the Madison Plan of Conservation and Development. Again, I'll get to this in detail in a few moments. It benefits the overall neighborhood. It's actually less intensive than other uses, uh, in that area, particularly the Hammond asset apartments right next door. It will supply, this is the important ones, it will supply needed affordable housing and will also supply, uh, allow for market, the markets to react to an unserved segment of the, uh, population of, of Madison. The conformance with the plan, um, there was a twenty thirteen plan. It had a lot of general, uh, policies and goals. And I looked through the whole plan, conservation, sustainability, protecting natural resources. Um, as, as I think you've gathered by the previous testimony by Mr. I, that there's, uh, no adverse impacts upon any of the resources mentioned within the plan. Manage activities in coastal areas. This doesn't, this is not in opposition to anything that, that was required particularly to promote the use of waterfront sites. Future land use in the twenty thirteen plan was essentially a depiction of the existing land use at the time. So, yeah, it, it's difficult to use it to guide, uh, any changes. And of course, plans are supposed to anticipate, um, changes and how you deal with him. Uh, but in housing, it talked about diversifying Madison's housing portfolio and housing which is more affordable. And, and again, um, that's, uh, that's really what this proposal will implement. Um, I looked at kind of general things too. I, I know you had the traffic study from Mr. Tridano, but just is, you know, we're, we're not putting, the, the proposal is not to put a multifamily development in the middle of nowhere. It's actually, it's, it's a rather accessible location through our, through the highway network on, on, on the shoreline. It's, uh, literally a few minutes onto the Hammond asset connector and up to, um, I ninety-five. So, um, it's, it's a desirable location in that it can, that the, residents can access employments through the shoreline and, you know, into the New Haven and, and, uh, New London areas if, if they need to. So it's a very accessible location. And I think, you know, so from a regional perspective, it is, it's not in the middle of nowhere. It's also near other services too. Again, it, it's along one of the major, uh, commercial and highway corridors in the state, uh, and certainly along all the shoreline communities, route one. You, I just listed some of the, um, businesses that are there, the important ones. But it is, it's, it has, uh, eating establishments, a gas station. You can have breakfast at either, I guess Dunkin' Donuts or Coen and Bagels, uh, a health facility, which is, is very important. And, and even an office which might provide some employment opportunities. The point is, is that not only do these businesses, uh, will serve the, uh, the residents as, as consumers, but they, it might actually attract middlesex health might. There might be somebody there, one of their employees that would find it appropriate to live in these proposed apartments. Again, it's that whole synchronicity between the, the, uh, you, the range of uses that make up a community that I think is really what good planning is about. I compare, also density is always an issue here. And, and it's an issue, I'm sure, I'm sure it's initially in some people's minds here. And it's an issue, um, in, in most of these type of situations that, that I, I deal with. Hammond asset apartments already there, they're certainly, uh, a contributing factor to the community. But as far as density, there's two ways you can measure density. One is just on dwelling units. And you could see here that, uh, they're comparable as far as the dwelling units, per acre nine point three or nine point six. Um, another way to look at it is bedrooms. Some communities do that, most don't. But if you want to look at the bedroom count, actually this is less dense than the Hammond asset apartments. So there's nothing going that's being proposed here that's alien or unique, uh, to, to the neighborhood. Now, if we look at the other, uh, residential uses across the, uh, over along Cottage Road there, the old cottage, um, colonies that are still in use. Again, the densities are, the density is lower than, uh, all, than the other, than two of the other three colonies. So as far as community character, again, it's, I'm going to stress that it's not, it, it is certainly compatible with other uses in the community. There, there is a mix of land uses, but, but along Cottage Road, there's, there's, it looks like historically has been more intensive land uses than further, uh, north. So, and this is, this would just be a kind of continuation of that historic development pattern. Zoning, um, it's in the R two district. And, um, there is some minor, except for the, um, the density issue, there's, uh, most of the, the requirements of the R two zone are adhered to. Uh, the notable, uh, exception being coverage. And coverage is often used primarily to address, um, drainage situations. And I think, uh, Mr. I discussed that in a great detail to show how that would be addressed. Now, on, on the right is, is the zoning map here. And you could see that the pink is the transition zone and the red is the commercial zone. Now, all the properties along, um, the north side of Cottage Road from the, uh, from Mill Road back to where it, Cottage Road joins, uh, Route one are zone transition zones, except one. And the transition zone was designed to allow, uh, more intensive uses than would be in the, uh, low density residential zones as a transition between the more intensive commercial uses. And it, there, there is only one piece of, the only property that's not part of that transition zone is the subject property. And the subject property does allow multifamily uses under certain requirements. And it's kind of a mystery to me why this piece of property was left out. If I was a, a planner in your community or on your commission, I would question that and see where it makes sense actually to allow some sort of traditional use onto this property. And that's what's really being proposed to you, uh, this evening. The, and, you know, we, we keep talking about, um, the, uh, affordable housing. But that's, that, I don't think that's really the main issue we have in, in Connecticut or in, um, certainly in Madison. I think the housing was built, um, for a certain type of, uh, certain people in a certain stages of their lifestyle, life expectancy. And, um, and not in other stages that they may have. Uh, and I think a balanced community will accommodate people of different, uh, stages and housing needs and preferences. I know I'm an empty nester now and I moved from a single family house. But here, again, the plant, your, your comprehend, your plan of conservation development emphasized this. The, that they, there's no, there's very little diversity in the housing types in Madison. And you could see this, the dark blue, a single family detached, which I'm sure you all figured out. About ninety percent of the units of the houses in Madison are, are single family detached. And with a median, uh, household sales of almost five hundred thousand dollars, you're certainly leaving a lot of people out there, people that may have strong ties to Madison. Now, this little project here before you, it certainly doesn't solve the problem, but it does start pushing the issue there that you, this, this whole, um, segment, either, um, single older people, single young people starting out in their careers that don't want, need or can afford a single family house now or forced to go elsewhere. And these people are contributors to your, um, to the town in, in most cases. And many of them will either from the town or will stay in the town. Regardless of that, the, 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 you're leaving out a whole, uh, segment of the workforce. And the, the point, the plan actually says that, that, that identifies this as a major issue that needs to be somehow addressed. The way it's addressed is what you have before you this evening. It doesn't, what you have for you this evening doesn't fit everybody. But forget the affordable aspect of it. Just the generous, nice one bedroom apartments will fill a need for your children, your neighbor's children, uh, people that work at your doctor's office and, 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 and other important members of the community. But of course affordability is, is sort of the, you know, the, the, an issue here too. The twenty twenty-one affordability housing plan really reinforced the findings for the need for affordable housing in Madison. When you went through the, the outreach, the people that responded conceded that there was a real need for affordable housing in Madison. And I'm not going to go through the statistics again. You've probably heard them and you, it'll probably put you to sleep right now. So I'm not going to do that. But the affordable housing plan again identified the current deficiencies in the policies and regulations about affordable housing in Madison. One of the interesting, um, points it raised is that the, the plan of conservation and development says, um, you know, basically, uh, multifamily housing in, um, in the center. And it says, or it does say if it's a good community need, it could be elsewhere, which is what I, I would interpret what you have before you this, this evening. But also, but what the, if, um, the affordable housing plan goes beyond that, saying, you know, these other commercial areas, um, particularly along Route one, may be appropriate for multifamily development, including affordable housing. And I think that's exactly where we are right now. Yeah, I mean, it's nice that we want to put things around the center of the town, but center of town has a certain constraints to development that the outlying commercial nodes or strips, uh, may not. And, and certainly you're still along that activity corridor, um, in the community. Now, you know, I, this, this whole thing of affordable housing, um, I don't know how many times I've heard it described or, um, debated what it is, what it isn't. And, and the state tells you what they think it is. I don't necessarily agree with the state in, in, in everything. But I, I decided to look at what we have anyway is the guidelines, that the units that will be, uh, made the six units that will be affordable, three for those that, um, at less than eighty percent of the, uh, in, incoming, three for those less than sixty. So I, I did a little work. I went to your, um, the, the board event. Um, they provided me with, um, information, um, from your, and also as did the town personnel. And, um, I was able to take a look at who might be eligible. And I was able to take a look at who might be eligible, which employees are based on their salaries, because these are one-bedroom, so they're not family units. But they're basically could be expected from one salary. And this is what I found here. And these are your teachers. This area here in in this light orangey tan, those are all salaries that are below are within that eighty percent threshold and therefore eligible for living in one of these units. So you're you're talking about people with high educations, master's degree recipients who have worked there three years. With bachelor's degrees, you're talking about almost all your teachers. There's a teacher shortage now. And certainly, one of the contributors, not the only contributor to the shortage, is that teachers can't afford to live in many of these communities. And I think I can't think of a better example right now than than Madison as to what 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 that how that really is a problem. Now, these are the other Board of Ed, non-professional, most of them. And you see the dark color now. The dark color are ones that that are eligible for any of the affordable units, even the lower, the ones going to lower-income people. So you have the secret assistant secretaries, general secretaries, receptionists, executive secretary, paraprofessionals. I'm not sure exactly what that is. I don't think that's important at this point. But you can see that these non-professional employees at the Board of Ed are would almost all of them qualify if they're single people for this affordable housing, these six units of affordable housing. The reason I use the Board of Ed because they had the information that I was able to glean and 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 do this with. When I look at the, I did go through the town municipal stuff here. I hope I did here. Oh, and I don't I don't have a slide for it, but there were approximately sixty town positions, occupational characteristics, and it is in the report that I said. Excuse me, fifty-five occupational categories that would be eligible for your affordable housing. So inclusion here, I I've tried to kind of cut the the housing need. I think the housing need is is the primary driver and the primary public interest here. And that's why it's it's using an eight thirty G application. But I think it fits the community, all sorts of other beneficial ways as well. Sometimes that doesn't happen. Sometimes it's not well-located. There's nothing wrong with the location here. There's no traffic problems. You've heard, you've heard testimony of that. There's no environmental issues that really are, we're not endangering any environmentally sensitive areas. It's really kind of a clean choice, I think. In in that it's it's the way that these little projects are probably the way you really want to get your affordable housing requirements or needs filled. These affordable eighteen units or the ten units next door, this is how it's will fit into the community. And therefore, you know, my my professional opinion is that this would be certainly a a benefit to the town of Madison. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Are there any questions? Attorney Shansky, did you want to add any more to the presentations?
Now, at this time, thank you, Madam Chair. Reserve time for after the public or when we reconvene, whichever you're doing.
Great, thanks. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners at this point? Not hearing any. Elliot, how are you doing? Erin, we're running at ten, ten past ten at this point. Do we have time to open up? I know there are a few hands raised.
I think that's at the discretion of the commission, how you wish to proceed, if we'd like to. Now, more hands raised, how you want to.
Actually, there are no six hands raised, yeah. What are thoughts from the commissioners? Can we endure a little bit longer here and open it up to some public questions?
I think we ought to let them ask questions if we can. We may have to cut it off, but they're here. And all the, all of the people are here to answer them, too, so.
Okay. So Erin, can you go ahead and?
To clarify this, these are questions that you're entertaining at this point.
Yes, just for questions, yes. We'll we'll then do a round of comments in favor, comments against, but now we have questions as part of the public hearing.
So I think Erin needs to intervene if it turns out not to be a question or the chairman intervene, but.
Yeah, or maybe also set a time limit if we if we need to at some point. But does anyone, any of the participants, the attendees have any questions for the group who've presented tonight?
There are six hands raised. I'm just going to go in order as they appear on on my screen here.
I think a few more appearing. Thank you, Erin.
First on the list is Rob Marzatelli. Just remind everyone to identify themselves, their name and address for the record before they ask their question.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Rob Marzatelli from Twenty Todd Mill Circle in Madison. I have statements to make. So how would you like me to proceed? I don't have questions. I have statements.
We'd prefer questions, and if you've already made statements or sent statements to us, we have that on file, so you don't need to read aloud, I don't think, what you've already sent us.
Okay.
It's part of the record.
So if I could just add then to what I've already submitted, I just wanted to add to Mr. Ott's comments.
Excuse me, Mr. Marzatelli, this is for questions currently, and then we'll have an opportunity for comments as well.
So what are my comments allowed? So what are my? I endured two and a half hours, almost three hours. When are my comments allowed?
After the questions.
Okay, so I'll withhold then until after the questions, and I would like to then proceed with my comments.
So, thank you. Are there any hands raised who are who are here just to ask questions? For clarification.
The next I have here says Rossi. If you could unmute yourself, please, and identify yourself for the record. You're here as Rossi?
Yes, I am.
And and what is your name?
It's my name. It's Ross Feratovic.
You've got a serious echo. I don't know if you can turn something off and help us hear you better.
And what is your address?
You not hear me?
That's better. Thank you. Yes, could you please give us your address as well?
Yes. You hit me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Because it's time to go to sleep.
Mr. Feratovic, what is your address, please?
It's my address. It's forty-two Mill Road.
Thank you.
I am neighbor of the new owner who want to build the the building of nineteen units. Answer my question. It's about the commission and the town hall. How the town hall expect to do something in the small that property to make it the huge building? And it's when you look at it, it's not acceptable to get that. And all this kind of conversation, it's have to somebody to convene, somebody to to do something is not right.
I'm going to give a very simple answer that may not be satisfactory for you, but we're following the regulations and state statutes. And we're just hearing the application presentation for the first time tonight, and I think this is likely to continue. I think so far we've we've what we've heard meets the requirements, and we need to evaluate it more further. But I don't think, I don't know if your question to the town and the commission can be answered more than that. Attorney Shansky, if you'd like to say anything on behalf of the applicant.
Yeah, but I understand all kind of that stuff. But first of all, the commission will have to know the rules, a regulation. And I am in here to first that his neighbor. And I have a well water. What I hear from the engineer, I think so him being in my property to measure how much that well pump pumping out the water per minute, four or five gallons or ten gallons or fifteen gallons, that it's not acceptable. The the second things, I want to say I understand I am something in the business like engineer and his builder. I know it's everybody have to make the money. I not get me wrong because I want to talk that clear and simple language, no? And engineer tried to stretch that piece of the land to make it that billing. The guy before who talking about the fire truck, it's right. It's not can go in because of no space. At the second, where it's put it, that septic, it's almost two thousand gallon a day. Where that water go? I want to ask that. At the end of that property, you have that pound, that water go there? At that pound, after two or three years, who had that start to smell? I don't want to say how that smell become. Already the same owner who have at the building, it's make three years ago or two years ago, then that ten story, ten ten apartments. And then put it the septic between the buildings. I wanted to know where that water go from that buildings. Does it mean going to pound?
I think Michael Ott explained that in his presentation. Michael, did you want to respond further? Michael is still here.
I am, Madam Chairman. I I'm not sure how how to respond. I'm not clear on what the question is exactly.
The question is where all that two hundred gallons, two thousand gallons of water, where that boring go?
I, so the wastewater affluent from all septic systems at 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 anybody's home or from an apartment building is discharged to the ground. There are there are rules and regulations and laws that have to be followed on for the design and the construction of septic systems that discharge wastewater effluent to the ground. And and those laws and regulations and standards have have been followed in the design of this proposed septic system.
Already that that pound.
Where where design that septic system? Next to the my property?
I I could you repeat the question, please?
I say where it designed that septic in that property.
Do you mean where is the septic system located?
Yeah, where he wanted it located.
It's 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 proposed to be located in the northwest owner, excuse me, of the of the land parcel as we as we described earlier.
To your property?
Yeah, but you have to know because I have it well water in my property. And engineers say it's my house, it's a single family. That is not true. And commissioning what they know because of I have it second building that it's the the house, guest house. Okay, I use the. Somebody interrupt me?
No, go ahead. Continue, please.
Yes, but this is its question of the engineer, no? He may know that my house, it's a single family. It's that I agree, but I have it the second billing that is the guest house. It's like almost eight hundred square feet. And I use that same well pump water for the two buildings, no? And I have it like thirteen to fourteen gallons per minute, the pump. In this case, in him, now have to make it that septic close to the my property. Who have to be hundred fifty or hundred seventy-five feet from my pump water. And I now agree to them make it that huge septic. And my question, I did it before, where is go that two thousand or more gallons of water a day?
I think it's been asked and answered, but.
Where it's go? Who know how that the ground after fifty or sixty or eighty feet? It's the how the soil, I know it's people drilling in here. I being here in my property. I look at that. I see that. And I ask, they say it's not the rock. It's some how say that the soil is different. It's not can water go that easy way down?
It feels proper.
And I And I worry more, I worry more, I worry more for the this pound, not for the my well water. Because of you people, you have to understand. Uh, when you, if that billing have that much, uh, that water can throw. And everybody, you know, I don't go in the bathroom, doing what you do and you go in the shower and all kind of that stuff in that water. When you stay in that, that palm, the palm there. It's after a while, does I mean one or two or three years, it start to smell. Does I mean destroy all this area around? No, it's destroyed just to the my property, the my house and destroy the other people around in here. It smell all that kind of stuff from septic. That is not acceptable. I know, I don't know. So I be clear with my English is maybe a little bit, no? That's clear, but I wanted to say you have to be be careful. The first of all, the town, what you do. No be pleasure, somebody who have the power and the money. You have to be look at the people that's middle people or people who like survive this day, no? But I am one of that because I put it all my money, what I make it in here, the last twenty years in this property. I don't want to get somebody destroyed my property.
We hear you.
I, I'm sorry for everybody, but look at this. Uh, uh, I understand the engineer, everybody work for the money. I understand the, the builder work for the money. But I just thought you want to ask the town, the medicine. Cannot do it certain things to get somebody right to do something. So have the power. I thinking this is a country free.
These are like all statements. There's not one question here.
Yeah.
I think we should move on.
So let's intervene. Let's take another question if we could.
Yeah.
Erin, there's some.
Um, one question I had, Madam Chair, um, and perhaps this would be, uh, how the applicant wishes to proceed? If we should allow the questions to come in and then answer them after they've all been heard and just take notes, or if you, if you're looking to address these individually as, as we go here this evening. Is there a difference?
I would, I would prefer to hear all the questions and make sure they are questions because I think people want to be heard, but they don't necessarily have questions. Um, how Attorney Shansky, how does the applicant or how do all of you applicant? Part of the team of applicants, how do you feel?
Pardon me. Thank you. Marjorie Shansky. We want to hear the questions.
Okay, so why don't, Erin, do you think it's possible to have everyone ask their questions? We can take notes. I don't know if that's.
That, that's reasonable.
Challenge on Zoom, but we can do it maybe?
Uh, the, the next in line here, uh, the name is Corey. If you could identify yourself for the record, unmute and identify yourself, please.
Hi, yes, this is Barbara from Twenty Edinburgh Lane. Um, I had a question about the leaching field. Um, I've had, so we're not high use and our neighbors aren't high use either for, for our leaching fields. We've had to have ours replaced and they currently just replace theirs. So after a certain period, leaching fields reach capacity, they're no longer useful and they have to be fixed. Um, so the question is how long, so we're not like an eighteen unit building on basically similar plot of lands. Um, and we've had to have ours replaced. Um, so how long do you expect the leaching field to support eighteen units? You know, there're gonna be at least two people per unit. Um, and then when it does reach capacity, because it will, it's also in a flood zone, so the water is fairly high already. Who's gonna fix it? And how long is it gonna take to fix? And then I didn't realize, looking at the map, it's um, right next to the well. So then you have to ask yourself, would you drink water from a well next to leaching field in a flood zone? So the first question is about leaching field. Basically, how long is it going to last for eighteen units, assuming thirty-two people? At least, at least, and then who's gonna fix it and how long will it take? That's the first set of questions. Next thing is, um, there'll be at least eighteen new vehicles, not ten, eighteen. Because you can need a car to get around Madison. Um, so eighteen to thirty-two new vehicles in that intersection. So will there be a stoplight put in there, some kind of traffic light? Or is it just going to be the one stop sign that's there now? So is the two sets.
Okay, thank you for those questions. Should we move on to the next raised hand?
Sure, the, the next I have is Deb. Deb, could you please identify, unmute and identify yourself for the record?
And give us your.
Hi, it's Deb King at forty-nine Cottage Road. Um, I have a, a few questions. Um, the first is, you know, there's twenty-seven parking spaces proposed for the cars. Typically, there would be thirty-six um, for this number of units, um, which also doesn't include guests. So where will the additional parking be located? Um, are people allowed to park on Cottage Road, which is very narrow, or Mill Road currently?
Okay.
Are you gonna answer questions or do you want me to just keep reading?
I think we're gonna collect them and, and then we can direct them to the appropriate people who are here. Okay, so thank you for that. Thank you for those questions.
Um, so the applicant stated that the loft is technically not a bedroom, but if people were using it as a bedroom, that would change, um, the requirements for the septic. So how will that be addressed? Um. Also, um, you know, we're currently experiencing drought conditions in Madison and the pond appears to be a number of feet lower than when the monitoring was performed earlier this year. Um, and for Mr. Ott has, have the dilution calculations been updated to reflect how the affluent discharge to the pond impacts the level of sewage drained into the pond at a lower pond level? Um. I have sent this picture in a number of times, so I'm sort of surprised that Mr. Ott wasn't aware, but on the Connecticut State Library website, there's a nineteen thirty-four aerial photo of the pond, um, which is larger than it is today. Have you seen that? Um, because it's definitely been there since nineteen thirty-four and also um, during the minutes of the November nineteenth twenty transition meeting. Um, this is a quote, Commissioner John Mathers asked whether the pond is natural or man-made. It is natural. It is spring fed, Mr. Gentile stated. So it, I think it's important, um, if you're not aware that it's, um, spring fed, that you, you know, that you know that. Um, I guess, and in terms of Raseem Faritovik, who we just heard from. Wh- why is the town making him pay for pulling up his pump to determine the required withdrawal rate? That doesn't seem fair. Um, I guess that's it for me for now.
Thank you.
Okay, that was, I think, five questions. Um. Next raised hand.
Don Moore is next.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Don Moore from Twenty Edinburgh Lane. And my question is. You know, one of the speakers talked about the benefit of having the ability to bring in school housing, which is very laudable, but it, um, the gentleman who spoke before about this concern about, um, the fact he's, you know, invested in his house for twenty years um, and may live on a fixed income, right? So, um, I know at least thirty families that are vehemently against this because I've been actively involved in this. And I'd say that at least half are probably living on fixed income or elderly or middle income. So I guess the question is, how do you weigh costs versus benefits, right? The fact that you brought up the putative school teacher who can now move in next to the pond and enjoy that at a lower price. Um, you, you know, what if it were one unit and there were fifty people living on fixed income who invested in their homes will now, you know, it, it'll be harder for them to sell their house, I guess. So the, the question is, is there any sort of cost benefits analysis here? And if so, how do you make that judgment? So that's the question.
Okay, thank you for that question.
Maureen Druin is next.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maureen Druin. I live at seventy-three River Road in Madison, right around the corner from this proposed development. Um, my question and concern is I haven't heard, um, any of the other approved developments in the area taken into consideration, um, in any of the impact studies, traffic density, anything like that. I believe right down the street, there's an approved development called Wellington. I believe it's thirty-one units, all um, affordable housing. And I believe right across the way down at one eighty-six Cottage Road is approved for thirty-two units as well as boat slips and some commercial space. So I was wondering if all of that additional traffic, um, and usage has been taken into um, consideration with any of the impact studies. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, O'Neil is next.
Think you need to unmute. There you go.
Hi, hello. My name is Brianna O'Neil with forty-nine Cottage Road. Um, and I've lived in a variety of places, Hamden, Westport, Connecticut, also Boston. And just my simple question is how is this? How is this impacting the health and safety of the community and the integrity of Madison and um, and the nature and the history that we've had in, in Madison for all these years? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next is Rob Marsatelli.
I have a few questions. How can this meeting be held, given my email to the commission, which was stamped dated August seventeenth with regard to the four major issues? That's question number one. Question number two. Um, how can the, how can Mr. Ott advocate that the forty-two Mill Road property is a single-family residence when in fact the documents indicate otherwise? Specifically with respect to vision appraisal that depicts the secondary building. And then, um, the question is with regard to Cottage Road, that I presume was named Cottage Road relative to the fact that it occupies single uh, or, or sing, uh, summer residence. And the town has not addressed the narrow road. How can that exist relative to the application? And that's, those are my questions. I, I do have further comments, but I think right now it's open for questions.
That's right. It's just questions. Thank you. Um, and it looks like we have four more hands up.
I, I have a a number nine oh two one zero six eight five. You could identify yourself, please. You'll need to unmute. Nine oh two one zero six eight five, if you're able to unmute. You can take your question.
Next.
Maybe we could circle back.
Uh, uh, another question from Corey, which I believe is one more.
Hi, Erin. Thank you. Yes. Um, yeah, I had another question. Back in two thousand nineteen, Mr. Gentile wasn't allowed to build four affordable units on that property, and yet now he's proposed to build, um, uh, was it twelve affordable, unaffordable units, six affordable units. So it's going from not being able to build four to now being able to build twelve. And I'm just wondering, what's the reasoning behind that? And how can that be allowed? Thank you.
Hey, um. I have Mill Cottage next with a question. If you can identify yourself. Mill Cottage, are you able to unmute and identify yourself for the record with a question?
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. All right. Hi. My name's Paula Steer. I'm at forty-eight Deveron Drive. And I had a few questions. I was wondering who in the past has put the no parking signs along Mill, right along, uh, last year, along the property and along from Route One, so that the Hammond Asset Summer Parking, um, wouldn't be overflow use in this area like it has in past years. Uh, there's only one paper sign that was one or two put up this year, but uh, the last years, there were a number of them to prevent the backflow of parking for people who you know, if it was, um, if, if the beach was filled. That was one question. I was wondering whose responsibility was that? It, because it seemed like it encompassed the road right, right up to the property, right through the property.
Did you have another question?
Yes. Um, my other question was regarding the septic engineer system. How many filters are being used and has this system been used in Madison for residential use versus office use? For the number of units? And my other question was, who would be monitoring, um, the filters that they are if they need to be changed, uh, since there may or may not ever have been a system like this put into Madison for residential use?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Erin, I don't know how you want to do this, um, but I would suggest that we not have repeat. That we give each person one chance to ask a question or two and not keep going recycling.
Sure, we'll go through some names that have not come. Sure, we'll go through some names that have not come forward yet. Next would be Eileen O.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'd just like to thank you all for your service to the town of Madison. And Erin, I know you're new. We've, I'm Eileen O'Neill, 49 Cottage Road, unit number 18. So we've been through this with Mr. Gentile before with his other project. He has the same team with him this year, um, or this project. However, this project is different and I want to know why the town of Madison is considering changing a residential zone, um, for more than four units on such a small parcel of land with so many environmental issues. And I'm very concerned about my neighbors' well, as well as the pond that's there, the spotted salamanders that I see on my property, um, that come from, it's a watershed, saying that the watershed goes westward rather than eastward. I don't believe the IWA ever took a walk down there to look at that. I don't know how that happened. We do have an appeal in. And my next question is, how is this P&amp;Z meeting happening when we are appealing the IWA decision already? Thank you.
Thank you. Erin, can you hear me okay?
Yes. Can you identify yourself with your address, Tom, please?
Yes, thank you. My name is Thomas Sullivan and my address is 49 Cottage Road. I have three questions there, brief. I would like to echo the earlier comment and thank the members of the commission for staying with us so late. And thank you for your service. My first question is, the applicants were given almost two hours to present their case this evening. Will the members of the public be given equal time to be heard, um, at some point along the way here? And I would recommend that if necessary, given the late hour, that we extend this public hearing so that the members of the public can be heard. So that's my first question. My second question is, Mr. Matthews has gone on the record and stated that the units are technically one-bedroom units, inferring that they are perhaps more than one-bedroom, two-bedroom units. It was Commissioner Bodenson that pointed out his faux pas. And I'm wondering if the commission will consider what the implications are if residents actually use these units as two-bedroom units? And my third, my third and final question is, as an abutting neighbor to the other property owned by Mr. Gentile, I'm wondering if members of the commission have done a site walk and have looked at the property. In the process of building, it's, it's wonderful that they've proposed, um, a detailed landscaping plan for this property because it abuts Mr. Gentile's other property, but he did considerable harm to us, the abutting property owners, in his other project and has done nothing to repair that. So if he can't be trusted to satisfy a, a, you know, a prior project right next door, what, what do we have to do to get him to be a good neighbor? And live up to his word? He has, to this day, not remedied problems with the border between the two abutting properties with his other property. So what is the commission going to do about that? Thank you again for your time, manager, and to members of the commission.
Thank you. Erin, do you want to try the 902 number again, just to see if we can?
Yes.
Unmute.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies earlier. I couldn't get my mute button, uh, that I'd be able to identify it on this new computer. But it's Dave Major and I'm at 111 Acorn Road in Madison. And I'm wondering, just out of curiosity question, what the average lot size in Madison? And with that question being asked, what is the average square footage of a home on that acreage in Madison? And then number two, I know I listened and somebody, it almost sounded like you or somebody was minimizing the amount of traffic on Mill Road, which I drive daily, and it's a very heavily traveled road. And now Waze is directing people to get to and from Hammond Asset from 95. Waze, the, um, the GPS tool, as everybody's familiar with, is directing people to go on Mill Road to get to Hammond Asset rather than going down the connector. This happens certainly with my Waze software, and I know a lot of my friends from various towns, it also does that with them. So I'm just wondering, obviously you guys would have had a traffic study commissioned for Mill Road, and I'm wondering what kind of volume on Mill Road that study, uh, you know, shows, what kind of traffic volume in each direction each day? The other question, I guess, is, and I'm, I'm not sure of this, but I'm curious as to why this specific location was chosen with all the other locations that are possible in town? Why was this specific location chosen? What's special about this location versus others across town? And can the lots be used? I know this has been asked many times as bedrooms, right? Because, um, I just, common sense is saying people are going to use those as bedrooms, even though they're not designated to be bedrooms. And what's the plan in town to prevent this? Because I could see this being a tremendous fire, safety, et cetera hazard, um, if people don't follow the rules and inappropriately use those lots for multiple uses. What's our plan to prevent, uh, action against the town if something negative were to happen? And that's it. Thanks so much for all your help and, uh, your, uh, your work on the commission, everybody on the board.
Thank you. Um, Erin, how do you want to do this? We've been, I've been taking notes as best I can. I don't know if everyone, we can try to.
You know, my, it, it, it just seems to me that it's too late to try to start answering the questions. A bunch of them are for the town. And I say, we put them on paper and two weeks, one month, the planning commissioner will come by, come back and answer some of the questions. And we turn to the applicant to come back and answer their share of questions and divide it up that way. But tonight, I just think it's going to be way too complicated. We don't have the answers to half of the questions asked for the planning commission. So that's my suggestion.
I, I had the same thought of trying to write them up so that we can do the best we can to answer them correctly and address them to the right people. Attorney Shansky, what are your thoughts about handling this? I think, you know, we want public response. We want to give them, you know, a fair chance to be heard. And it's, I mean, I, I also want to say that, you know, a two, having a two-hour presentation is not unusual for us. So, um, you know, we appreciate the thoroughness of the presentation and there's no time limit on it. But I do think that we want to be open to hearing from the public as well and answering questions whenever we can. So, sorry, go ahead, Attorney Shansky.
No, thank you. No, Marjorie Shansky, for the record, I agree with both of you. As I wrote the question or scrambled to write the questions down, they ranged from the rhetorical to the philosophical to the substantive. And I think that they do need to be sorted out and responded to appropriately, and that will take a bit of time to do so. So I'm, I'm going to suggest to Erin that we speak in the next day or so and compare our notes and make sure that we're looking at the same questions and, and then we'll get about providing answers to the ones that are within our domain.
Yes. As I'm minute taker this evening, I, I hope I chotted them down accurately and then we'll reflect it in the minute as well.
Exactly.
Madam, here, I will just let you know that Mr. Marzatelli has his hand raised again. Um, and wondering if you would entertain.
We can take one more, one more question and then, and then we'll, yeah.
Uh, as, as well as Mr. Major, who was just. Mr. Marzatelli?
Hi, can you hear me this time?
Excuse me? Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, very simply, I'll, I'll leave a short question. Why is this meeting being held, given my email to the commission that was submitted and dated August 17th? I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that. And we'll get back to you. Should we try?
And, and Mr. Major, uh, has his hand raised as well.
Sorry, I think I hit that button by accident. My apologies, new computer, sorry.
Oh, so no new questions?
No new questions.
Okay.
That's fine.
I guess, well, actually, I did have one question. I'm just wondering, so again, the meeting, um, and it was great, but it went, what, probably three hours, I think? You guys discussed this one project. Maybe I'm a little off on the timing. But I agree with a subsequent speaker who said, uh, question asker, I should say. Why does the public have such little time to ask questions, um, in these, these types of meetings? I think it's, it's actually, I feel it's disgraceful, but maybe that could be visited in the future so that the public would have more time to have input, not at 10:30 or 11:00 PM at night.
I think we all agree with you. And, um, this is the beginning of the public hearing, I would say. You know, I think that it will be continued and there will be further opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, what's happened now is, this is the public's opportunity to ask questions. We've had everybody ask their questions. We'll come back and answer them. But the next one will also start out with people who want to speak for and against it. And that's where the public is going to have their ability to present. So we're not cutting that off. We're just doing the questions first, then the for and against. Is that not right, Erin?
Well, the, the, uh, the public will also have a chance to ask additional questions before we move on to the next phase, which would be, you know, speaking for and against. And this isn't like the only opportunity for them to ask questions. Once the questions are answered, they'll have the opportunity to ask more questions.
Okay. Darn.
So I think we'd like to keep the public hearing open. And, um, the question then is, Erin, do we have time in our September 1st meeting to keep it going? And, or should we schedule it for the September 15th?
Um, I, I, I think you can manage that for the first.
For the first? And does that work with the applicants?
It's, uh, well, well, I, I don't know how my assembled masses are feeling, but we'll do our best to make it work.
I think, Michael Ott, you need to be there. And Carl Giordano, there were some questions about the traffic issues, so.
September 1st is the next regularly scheduled meeting for the commission, should the applicant or commissioners have conflict and be unable to attend that, uh, you know, or for need be, the applicant does have the ability to request, uh, table that, or, you know, to continue to hear, to, to another date, and that would be done in holding, uh, with members. So, uh, you, the commission would just need to make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Certainly, I have a motion to continue the public hearing.
I will move to continue the public hearing.
Thank you, Shawna. A second.
I will second.
Thank you, Elliot. Any further discussion?
Could, could I clarify that that is to the September 1st meeting?
September 1st, thank you.
Yes.
Our next meeting. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? All in favor? Approved unanimously, Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, um, for making it past 11.
Thank you.
And we'll see whoever can make it to the first. We'll see then. Erin, I would, um, hope that we can table the other agenda items for the September 1st meeting.
The, um, I, I think the only items that you have on the agenda is to schedule an additional public hearing.
Okay.
The next application, so if, if the commission is agreeable, that's a fairly quick.
Sure, sure.
To handle here, this is, this is an application for a planned development district. Um, and it's, uh, it was received at our August 4th meeting and, uh, to set a public hearing date, uh, as that is a zoning amendment application. And staff would be suggesting September 15th, even for a public hearing.
September 15th, you said?
Correct.
Okay.
We just need a motion from the commission.
I move that we open the public hearing September 15th for 22-19 New Road. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Elliot. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Nope. Unanimously approved, Erin.
Thank you. And you absolutely can table the minutes.
Well, I don't know, Elliot, I'm, how would you feel about it? I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and approve them, but, um.
But just for notification purposes, wanted to schedule the hearing, uh, at least.
Thank you for pushing that through.
And I think we could probably do the minutes fairly quick, if you want to get them out of the way, so that there's not three at the next meeting.
Sure, that's fine with me.
All right, so I have, uh, the planning and zoning meeting minutes from July 7th. Members present were Snow, McDowell, Hitchcock, and Bodenson. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second. Ron, any discussions or changes? None? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? None? Abstain?
I'll abstain.
Okay. And then on the July 21st meeting minutes, um, I had, there was an error in the present. Uh, it said Snow, McDowell, Hitchcock, Hay, and Bodenson. And I know that I was not present. So I got to be moved to the, uh, absent list on that. And I will entertain a motion for those minutes.
I move to approve them.
Second it?
Second.
Dr. Hay, uh, any discussions or changes other than me being moved from present to absent? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? None? And I will abstain, just because I wasn't present. That's it.
Thanks, Elliot.
Okay, if you can hang in just a couple more minutes, I wanted to, I wanted to just say that we do have a new commissioner appointed, um, who should be joining us at the next meeting. His name is John Dusa. And, um, he's just waiting to hear back from his employer to make sure there's no issue with him serving on the commission with us.
And John will be in the capacity of an alternate.
As an alternate.
Why an alternate? Good.
That's how he was recommended to the Board of Selectmen, and that's how he was approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Huh. We have four openings, we didn't alternate?
But, I mean, for practical purposes, on the commission. And we need, we need, we need more people, so it'll be great, I think. Um, Erin, did you want to add anything? Any further remarks?
Um, the only thing I have is that we, um, The only thing I have is that we, the commission has voted. We have TKE Planning and Policy Group on board as the consultants to be assisting in the POCD update. And I had early preliminary meeting with both John Guskowski and Michael Demato, principals of the group. And we had talked about possibility of using the first meeting of the month as our, that typically was a planned meeting in the past? As our dedicated plan of prospecting that we, for the commission to all vote on our project. On the first meeting that we had thought to hold as our kickoff meeting, what is the September 1st meeting? So given the fact that we do have continuation of the public hearing, I'll reach out and John Guskowski will see? If by chance we just want to do a brief introduction and, and call the tackle of the commission prior to opening the public hearing? Or if we schedule another day. Although the first of the month seemed to work best as, you know, he does represent other municipalities authorities and often has to attend mission meetings in the evening. So that first Thursday seemed to work out. But I'll, I'll keep you updated and we'll see that on our agenda, if that's how we're moving forward.
Thank you, Erin. You're getting, I don't know if it's happening with other people, but you're getting, we're losing the sound for you. So I think it's time to say goodnight.
Not my voice.
Not your voice.
Oh, it's shutting down.
Yeah, your, yeah, your office is telling you to get out. Could we have a motion for adjournment, please?
I moved.
I'll, I'll second it then.
Great, thank you. Further discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Pose. Oh, just kidding.
Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.